Being that this is nine thirty, we are going to call the morning workshop of the Clicktack County Board of County Commissioners to order. And our first order of business is a department update from our Public Works Department.
Okay, Gordy's off.
Really getting an echo today.
We can push that mic back a little.
Yeah.
Or just like that, no. There you go. Bring it back that way.
There we go. Okay. So as far as Gordy's out reviewing the RFPs for the bridge to manage the consultants for the bridge. We have a few things on your consent agenda. First item is the fairgrounds lease agreement between us and Friends at the Fair. This is for their fundraiser barrel race event that they have every year. And this helps fund the road, helps fund the fair. Item number four is liquid asphalt. It's the contract for us to get into purchase liquid asphalt with Alina. There is no, there's no contract cost because it's an open ended contract. We don't have to buy anything or we can buy as much as we want. Local agency agree, our supplement agreement with Sergeant. This is for our bridge inspections. They've added new regulations this year, so we have to inspect a little bit more in depth. And then we have reimbursable agreement. This is one of many to follow. This is for the port district. This is so we can do work for the other districts, the cities, the port. And we're actually doing work for the port as we speak. Which we'll get into that here in a minute. On the construction side, the signs that Guy posted probably restart next month. They have quite a few working days still. So they have, they have forty-two days left. Those are working days. Roosevelt Paver contract was given, contractor was given the punch list, so he's working on that. There's not much on there, but some. And Courtney Road contractor can start grubbing again, and they've been burning slash piles.
Yes, I smelled that yesterday.
Yeah. Design side, we still have the open house scheduled for the path at May seventeenth. The parking lots, we're preparing the plans for advertising. Guard rail contracts, we've pretty much finished the review. We should be getting ready to go to add shortly. And our bridge call for projects is out. We actually, I met with Stephanie Tax and the people from FHWA. And the state, throughout the state, people are having evidently having a tough time getting things together. Because the call ends or and sunsets April twenty-ninth. And there, and it's ninety million dollars available, and there's only been one submit so far. Maybe there'll be a bunch.
Everybody will submit.
I'm thinking, but that's not what their Spokane County did say they had four. So we have four that, because we haven't submitted either, but we will submit today or tomorrow. Okay, on the maintenance side, crews are cleaning the ditch on the Lidle grade, base repair on Garrison, rolling the arena in preparation for the Home and Garden Show next week. And actually this weekend, and grading the roads. West End crews are crack sealing, removing dead trees and danger trees from Trout Lake Park. And they're constructing the north end of Ford Lane for the port. And they're also grading roads. That's the work we're doing for the port. New services building. We're working on the parking lots. They're gonna actually do the stormwater crossing across to Allen Street. On Monday they'll start, so Allen will be closed Monday, maybe part of Tuesday. Flooring, we're still working on the punch list. Furniture, like we've talked about, let's see, Annex five has been moved. Annex one, the abatement is scheduled for May second, May third, with the demo scheduled for May ninth, the start of the demo. And that will clear up the rest, all of the annexes. HVAC replacement. The courthouse units have been replaced. The new units are up and they are running. The riffers are working today to seal the old curbs or remove the old curbs from where the units were sat before. Pioneer Center, the equipment has been delayed again till July, which means we're gonna have to nurse those units through the summer. We won't get it till July, and we can't shut the units down in July. It'd be way too hot, so we won't be doing it until the fall. That is a full year, or a little, even little further since when we awarded that contract, so. SADIS Pass, we're gonna walk up tomorrow and get a better, we're gonna line, actually line the center line of the road. Think I'm gonna have to push it back a week. It's just too wet up there. I don't wanna tear everything up, I'll have a new problem. So we'll, we'll probably push it back at least a week before we start working on the road. And then the only other thing we have is Trout Lake Park opens this Friday. That concludes the list for today.
Any questions for my seatmates? Please.
Got an email about Historic County Courthouse grants opening this year and was curious if we had anything on the agenda there.
We are going to have. It's what we talked about a while ago. That's why we wanted to keep moving forward with the design, because we're gonna use the match from the parking lot. And the match that we do for the remodel, we are gonna submit, yeah.
For that project, there's no other, just that project?
Just the new project that we, that we submit for, yes.
And then something for Lee. Can you make sure we get that Clicktack Path Open House Public Meeting publicized in the paper for May seventeenth at six thirty? In case more than one of us want to go to that?
Are you planning on going? Are you wanting to go?
It's three miles from my house, so yeah.
Okay. Anything?
Just more, I do have, as I relayed, I did have the conversation yesterday with Doug Miller from the PUD had called and has some new numbers to share on the Dallas Port wastewater plant. Hopefully I will bring those, but we're gonna try to do it today at the end, because they're gonna get done. Because they've got PUD meeting today. We were, we were gonna do it at lunchtime, but apparently I had already had a lunch engagement I had forgotten about. So I will bring those back as far as what, maybe it's better news. I'm hoping, I wouldn't hold my breath as far as they, they were crunching more of the, I think the stuff from the the capital costs that are needed over the next ten years. And so he had some stuff he wanted to share, so I will, I will bring that back with me after today and see what it is.
Hopefully, hopefully it's good news.
Yeah. Because it was fairly bleak the last.
I was thinking, you know, maybe the legislature's gotta have, I mean, they've got all this money.
Right.
It's the same story we heard yesterday. You know, they have, they are not sure how they're gonna spend all this infrastructure money.
Right. Pick me, pick me.
No, that's what we're saying. We're saying, okay, you know, you wanna give us more, we'll take more.
Right.
We may actually be in that position.
Right. And it certainly, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, you know, wastewater plant is, what more infrastructure like can you be? And it is ready where we've already went through the engineering study. As far as these are the projects that are identified for the next ten years that have to have capital put into them. It seems like they, it would be really easy to qualify. It's not like, oh, let's figure something out. It's like, no, we, we already have this done. It's an existing thing, and these are these things that we need, and we don't know how we're gonna fund them. So we'll see. I'm hopeful.
Yeah.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the big thing there. I, I don't know, we'll, we'll see. I'm not holding my breath.
No, I'm hoping that they do pass some of that down. Most of it's road, when we met, it was just all to do with roads, not with wastewater utilities. But I know they had a bunch of money.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, sir. That was quick and easy. Jeff, Director King. He's yielded his time to you. Don't feel that you have to use it.
Okay.
First joke of the day.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you for the update, the email.
And the updated, updated.
Yeah.
But good news, so I wanted to include it. Because we need good news these days. Can you hear me okay? Is this the right level? Okay. First of all, consent agenda. Two, or excuse me, one item on your consent agenda today, which is the radio system use nine-one-one dispatch services agreements for fourteen fire districts in the city of Bingen. If you have any questions about that.
When is the last time District Six signed an agreement?
Never. Didn't have agreements until I started. And District Six, I don't believe there's any living memory of when they were actually dispatched by us. I've not heard when that was.
And District Six is Dallas Port, right?
Correct. Yes, they are dispatched by Wasco County. So when we get, we obviously take all the nine-one-one calls. When we get them, we have to call Wasco County Dispatch, and then they page them and dispatch over.
They pay Wasco County for that dispatching service?
Yes, they do.
Oh.
Yes, they do. I have did my level best for three years to convince them that they could be dispatched by both. Because they do a considerable amount of mutual aid for MCFNR in Wasco County and the Dals. And they wanna keep that relationship. But they could be dispatched by both if they so choose, but they do not. And my, having dealt with it, as I did, my belief is that until the fire chief changes, that there's no reason for me to go back. Anything else on that? So next week, if Lee accepts my submission and I get it all right, will be on your agenda, the renewal of the DNR subtenant lease agreement at the Juniper Point site. You will see that that agreement will go into effect retroactively from last June. And it's a two-year agreement, so I didn't want you to see that and question why. As a result of the DNR's staffing issues and different things that went on early on with them. And then my staffing issues in the last several months. It's taken us almost a year to get that renewed for last year. And then it will carry into another year.
And are their prices going up?
Yes, yes, they increase three percent a year. Yep. And the reason that it's only two years is because that prime land lease is only for that. With the landholder, if you'll remember, we had to work with them extensively. They're looking at changing the use of the land and all those sorts of things. So they didn't wanna sign a land lease agreement for more than two years. So next year, we'll get to work both of those things out. But that should be on your agenda for next week. Public safety, radio system, performance and functionality. Again, I cannot report to you as I like to that the radio system is performing and functioning normally. We still have the issue at Kazer Ridge with West Ops. That one channel at the Kazer Ridge site has been off since January thirtieth. Tier one and tier three support personnel are working on it today again. They found some things out yesterday that led them down a much more promising path to resolving that issue. However, the primary microwave interference at Stacker Butte that was affecting the stacker, actually it's the Kazer to Stacker microwave link was determined and has been temporarily mitigated by turning down the power of that transmitter pending putting the proper filters on that transmitter from FM broadcaster at Stacker. So that's the good news.
Has the FM broadcaster agreed to pay for our time for tracking down their problem?
Not yet.
Are we trying?
Yes. We're gonna, as soon as we get the, the permanent fix to that interference problem, then I will start having those conversations, right? I don't wanna do anything to derail the actual fix.
Implementation.
Yes. Because right now, it's just a matter of, they've turned their power down to an acceptable level so that it doesn't interfere with our microwave. So that is decreasing their broadcast range and advertising and all that. I mean, they're, they're doing that as a sacrifice because they know it's important and it affects public safety.
How did one of those get built without the filter put on?
That is a lengthy and complex answer, but mainly it's improper oversight for the site owners that sublease.
You mean the people that are, that are charging us to find out what the problem is?
In this specific case, yes.
Yeah.
Well, and they took those, that company took over ownership of this site just three years ago. So all of those agreements and all of those things were in place prior. So either the, the agreements weren't sufficient or they weren't applied.
Yep.
Yes, hered to or enforced.
Does the FCC have a hand in that, or are they just a complaint driven?
Yep, complaint driven. And when I have dealt with this in the past, they need you to figure it out and tell them who it is and then.
And then they'll send the letter.
There's, and yes. And next on the list is the fact that underneath this primary microwave interference, there was a secondary interference. It's very intermittent, yet very disruptive when it does come. So it is still affecting the Kazer to Stacker link. And I've been advised by my tier one support or tier three support that instead of spend more money tracking that down as we have this primary interference, that it will be more cost effective to license another microwave frequency pair and switch to that pair. It's higher up on the nine hundred megahertz band out of the range of this interference. Because as you know, intermittent issues are hard to track down. As the constant interference has taken this long, yeah, it'll be better to.
Would we need a new microwave blinker? Can we change that digitally, that frequency on those radios?
Yes, we can update the equipment that we have now, just change the frequency in the equipment we have. We just have to go through the FCC licensing process, yeah, to get a new frequency pair. Yeah, it's two frequencies to make that repeated link. So I'm looking into that, and we're moving down that path. I told the support that we need to test that to make sure, to the extent we can, before we make that investment and move on, test whatever frequencies that the Frequency Coordination Center gives us to say, these will work. These aren't being interfered with. So that's the process we're in right now on that. I want to item. Next, off of Juniper Point site, county ops and the road channel base station faults have been causing system wide keyups on just the county ops channel and the road channel, so therefore I've left them on. We have silent keys on those two channels periodically throughout the day. Tier one technician is troubleshooting those this week to determine what might be causing that and to, to find a fix. And to the general maintenance, I've got two items there that are on hold. The annual review from last year in the Berdoin site. The Stacker Butte base radio started throwing a fan alarm last week. So yesterday, tier one went there as a priority and replaced that fan. At the Diamond Gap site, we've had a low temperature alarm going off. We thought that the owner of the site had got the HVA system fixed. And apparently when we turned our alarms back on, that's not the case, so I'm coordinating with that site owner. And then the Flat Top Security Camera, which is also the responsibility of the same company. It's failing, and I'm working with Astound to get that fixed as well. Any questions about radio system performance, maintenance? As I mentioned in my last update and spoke to the chairman even before that about, this process is gonna cost us extra money above and beyond what we have budgeted. I'm still determining what that will be for the out of normal scope of contract for the maintenance that tier one and tier three support does for us. As soon as I have firm numbers, I'll let you know. But right now, we're in the range of thirty thousand dollars. Okay. So the lease agreements, all new lease agreements have been put on hold pending all these other activities and my priorities for my workload. As I mentioned before, we've got the DNR lease renewed. And the radio system. Public Safety Radio Project, been working with Public Works and the consultant to determine those designs. I know Public Works gave you an update last week about options for the microwave system out there. Just wanted to see if you had any questions about my side of that, the radio system itself versus the facilities construction and so on.
Timeline, we still expecting to be online this year, fallish, winterish?
Next year? No, not next year, fall, winter, probably next year, spring, early summer.
Well, last I heard it was this year, so I figured it moved again.
I, I have never promised this year. With all the FCC licensing and things that still need to get done, best case scenario, we might get it online before the end of this year. More likely, early next year, spring would be a more realistic target.
Jeff was talking about a licensed link for the back hall, all the IP traffic, everything. You know, where are we stuck at? I know the, next to it, you know, those other sites are all fiber fed, aren't they?
That's incorrect.
I thought they, I thought they.
Only for the security cameras, and those are all somebody else's fiber that I've, or more accurately, whether it's fiber or their microwave. But so at Flat Top and Diamond Gap, where we have security cameras, those are all owned and maintained by Astound and go through their microwave for internet connection.
Yeah, I, I know that. We got no fiber up there. I was talking the other sites up on top of SADIS.
Oh, on top of SADIS. Yeah, so that would be Wash Dot and US Cellular top, and I believe they have fiber.
Right.
Goes right past our proposed site.
Past our proposed site. And so are we, have we looked into the cost of that, if we wanted to hook up to that?
I know Jeff and Rick were going to look into that. I have not. As far as putting any public safety radio traffic on that, that is not an acceptable, reliable transport for that. That would still need to be our microwave system. Security cameras, possibly the alarm system. But right now, the microwave system we have in place at all the other sites, it's a fractional T one. So it's, doesn't have much bandwidth, and that was a conscious decision by the county at the time it was being built to save money. All of our radio traffic and all of our alarms ride on that currently. The only thing that doesn't that we depend on at, like I said, Flat Top, Diamond Gap, and Stacker, now we have cameras. And we used to have it at Juniper Point. And at Stacker and Juniper Point, that was a cooperative agreement between the county and Gorge Net. They provided the bandwidth for those cameras.
Correct.
And they still do, the new camera at Stacker. So, yes, when, it would be best, what I'll say about the microwave at SADIS Pass, it would be best to install a much more robust microwave system from Stacker Butte to the prime site, Emergency Management Building. Now, and then pay for that if it is not cost prohibitive. Because that's what we'll need to do going into the future at all the sites eventually when we have to upgrade to IP based radios. That's outlined in my forty-year projections.
And the prices on those are coming down significantly. The price of licensed links are coming down. I mean, there's some good radios out there that are really affordable, but great uptimes.
And the vendor, and the specific equipment that we now have in our current microwave system that links all the sites together is, was new technology when we entered into it in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. When we went online in twenty-fourteen, there's no indication that that is gonna age out anytime soon. So unlike the Page Channel where we have the Quantar radios that are at the end of their life expectancy already, we'll have to replace those in the next two to three years is what's on the plan. But I have a number of spares of those specific radios. So if we, if we start losing them one at a time, then we can replace up to four, including what we are, the one that we're gonna put at SADIS Pass. So, yeah, we were fortunate enough to get some of those surplus from other counties over the last several years. Any other questions? Okay. Nine-one-one call taking, Public Safety Radio Dispatching, Chief of Operations, Phil is at a training for a few days this week, so he's not with me today. Our staffing remains as I described it to you last week. We had one comms officer resign as of April fifteenth. Another comms officer was released from training April twentieth. We have had a couple of illnesses which have been taxing our ability to staff. People have been working, currently, some people are working six, seven, and one, nine days in a row to be able to cover for those illnesses at this time. We are still advertising for the three full-time positions and the one casual. And as you authorized, the hiring of an additional three candidates to make up for that attrition in training and turnover that we expect. Right now, we are trying to figure out what we can do to advertise better. Normal advertisement went out when we still needed just two people. We re-advertised the normal means. We put on, we paid for Facebook ads targeted to the gorge area and the communities in the gorge for people that already live local and wanna stay local. We have, we targeted advertisement to the Facebook groups for the nine-one-one dispatcher associations, put it on the National Association website and in their message boards. We received nine applications. Oh, and I back up, we sent this out also to all of the fire districts. And the sheriff sent it out to the posse members, and we sent it out to search and rescue, trying to target those volunteers that we see as already having a heart and a passion for helping people in public service and are already emergency responders. I think that's gonna be key to getting the right people and keeping them, people that already have that passion and furthermore, live locally and have decided to exercise that in their volunteer work. So put that message out there in the last two weeks. Unfortunately, at this time, we've still only received nine applications.
How does that compare to your normal?
In the last year and a half, it's standard. Before, we would get. Before, we would get anywhere from fifteen um, to thirty applications out of posting. The problem is that most of those were just seeking a job. Or just seeking to keep their unemployment benefits.
Right.
They had to keep doing that as a requirement. Very few people that were seeking this job, and that's a key factor, they're not looking for this job, as in uh one of the interviews we did recently, um, when I explained to the person that the normal schedule when we're fully trained is two months on nights, two months on days, in a rotating basis throughout the year. And they visibly flinched at the shift work idea, so you know, like, we have people that know what, what they're getting themselves into or they're not gonna stick around. For those night shifts, holidays, weekends.
So I would rather have nine applications of people that are local that care than thirty-five applications with thirty of them trying to just keep their unemployment benefits. So of these nine, is there any pro- anything promising?
There was only one that we chose to interview. And that was the one I explained to you, yes, so my point in bringing this up is that we are we have to advertise differently, more direct. And, you know, try and find people that are doing this work in the cities and want to move away. Hopefully, live in a rural community because that's the trend right now, people are, you know, moving out to the rural areas. So, we're gonna try and find it in our current budget to advertise on different platforms in different ways. Because otherwise, um, no matter what you approve me to hire and train if I can't get them to apply. Doing everything we can think of at this time, so if you need a flyer to give to any of your friends, family or relatives, that would be good, I can hand you one.
I've seen it all over Facebook on about every page out there, so
Yep.
It's been put around locally, that's for sure.
We've been sharing it for sure.
Wonderful.
I mean, the, the one I, I met with the, um, somebody who just moved from the gorge to Washington County because over there, the pay, at least they have a chance of buying a house where what they're getting not from us, but somewhere else in the gorge, they're just, there was no way chance they could ever buy a house. And so you're trying to entice them away or from the city coming this way and the city's trying to entice us going that way.
What I would encourage those, you know, from the gorge and the price of housing is farther east, you know, if they're anywhere.
Don't worry, I was trying to get them to come back.
If they're anywhere like Lisle High Prairie West. Yep, they're gonna have a hard time buying a house or any real estate, but the farther east you come the Golden Dale area is still reasonable.
But then again, if you're working a hundred and eight hours in nine days, you're good, that's pretty good paycheck.
Yep.
If you need to supply housing, you'd put trailers up there or something and they could just all bunk in a trailer.
Last time we did that, we got accused of having concentration camps at the fairgrounds, so I might hold off before.
Before you put it inside a chain link fence?
I'd put it up, yeah, yes, already take that beating. But, so, there's, there's where we are in staffing and I wanted you to be fully aware. We are doing everything we can and still bumping up against the wall. The operations and training of nine one dispatch, um, the upgrade to the nine one phone system. Um, still waiting on some replacement equipment, but we're gonna go ahead with phase two of that transition uh, this Thursday morning. Be taking our nine one phone system offline and all of our phone calls will be going, both nine one and on emergent will be going to Skamania County and coming back to us either over the radio uh, from Skamania County on their channel or through our backup cell phones to uh, dispatch those out. For approximately two to three hours. Um, and the Texas nine one project is pending the phone system upgrade. Uh, the state access system, the physical onsite security portion was successful and uh the remote technical audit portion is still ongoing. Um, we had a telecom one and two training uh, that we hosted here locally and it was successful. That's part of what got our last trainee out of training earlier this month. And part one of the emergency medical dispatch training was also successful. Got all of our current staff through that training in two days, which is a challenge when you're this low staffed. But we'll be moving forward with upgrading that system and getting it online and everybody fully trained. Any questions about nine one one dispatch? I'm trying not to take up
None here.
On the balance of the time. Okay, uh, emergency management program, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, we have not received any new requests since my last update five weeks ago for PPE or any other supplies related to COVID. So I see that as a good sign, watching our own numbers and as I mentioned before Yakima County's numbers as a gauge, uh, we're doing really well, Yakima County currently has zero uh, patients hospitalized. They did have two patients die over the weekend, unfortunately, and they went from an average of ten to fifteen new cases a day. Over the weekend, they had like fifty-four, so there's a little uptick in new cases, but the data tells me that the severity of those cases and the way they're able to treat them is keeping people out of the hospital and keeping them from dying, so good news.
How long is the shelf life on a lot of that that we have piled up?
The shortest would be, well technically, the gowns. Um, but that's an artificial, and so the, what breaks down is some of the uh, elastic. And I think we talked about this a lot last update with face masks, elastic bands. Um, and those are, you know, real life expectancy, no matter what's on the box, three to five years, depending on the quality of the material. Um, but if it's gonna be used by hospitals and you know, the federal government doesn't give exceptions for the extension of those expiration dates, the gowns will go expired first, um, then the face masks. But the gloves, the hand sanitizer, a lot of those other things have an extended shelf life.
So what are the gowns, are they two, three years, how long?
Yeah, I think they're a two year, two, you'd have to confirm that, but it wasn't very long. And it's just because of the material that's made up. Okay. The state continues to ask for information about, for the AAR process that they're conducting and uh participating that as, as my schedule allows, because I think it is important, not only for eastern counties jurisdictions, but also small eastern counties to have a voice in that process.
Remind me, AAR is for what?
Oh, sorry, after action review?
That's what it is.
Uh, for the COVID incident? And then the state EOC will, or is indicating now that they're gonna term- terminate their uh, EOC activation for the COVID response uh, coming this July first. Outdoor burn bans, as you know, zone one is scheduled to go into effect as you've already signed that resolution, May first. Uh, zone two and zone three are still being evaluated. Bring that to you three to four weeks before it's needed so that we can have time for you to sign it, get through our process and then and advertise it to uh, the public. Right now, um, there are discussions about the first to the middle of June for zone two and zone three.
That rain pushed it back a little bit there.
Depending on what it's, yeah, going. And historically, since we've uh, added the zone system, um, zone two and zone three have fallen into that anywhere from June first to July first, but July first has been at the extreme. And that's only for zone three, the west end of the county. Zone two is typically either June first or June fifteenth in the last six years.
Who chose where the zones are located because that gets confusing to everybody?
Um, there are a lot of thought and work went into that, um, I I came up with that system as a new director because as a citizen I was frustrated with the fact that it wasn't based on reality in the ground at that point, it was just July first and didn't matter if East County was ready to burn in May and West County was still had mud puddles, you know, in your driveway. It was just, i- i- if the fire districts weren't gonna do it for themselves, you know, the county commissioners would at least by July first. So, that was a collaboration between myself and all the fire chiefs that were willing to participate. Uh, and we drew all of those lines where applicable on fire district boundary lines. Uh, when it gets into what is commonly referred to as no man's land, uh, either DNR protection or none towards the east end. Then we picked um, either travel routes or, you know, rivers that, that were obviously visible on the ground, right, not some arbitrary line on the map. Although fire district boundaries could be said to be arbitrary lines on the ground, but you should know what fire district you're in. As a homeowner going to burn a slash pile, which is what this applies to. Yeah, and, and like I said, all the fire chiefs agreed. As you can see, zone two includes Lisle Fire District, which originally, you know, that looks like on a map, that should be West County, but along the river, they have predominantly um, light, grassy fuels that dry out in the wind faster than your timber fuels. And the fire chief and his firefighters were like, no, we need to be in zone two. So especially down along the river and up in the Courtney Road area, that does dry out, you know, faster than Trout Lake and Glenwood. So, that's how those zones were chosen.
I was more talking about why you name, I mean, I understand because it goes first, you chose it one versus following the opposite where everything else starts one on the west side. It just makes it very confusing, yes.
Cause it doesn't, it isn't the exact commissioner.
That, that was another thing is that we put them one from west to east, one through three, then, you know, that could be a commissioner district.
Right, you could have-
You call them districts, that's why we call them zones instead of districts, you don't confuse them with commissioner districts or the fire districts. Yeah, it, it took me over a year to get this hammered out and get all the fire chiefs to agree. We did the best we can, there's nothing to say that we can't change it.
We'll get by, I was just looking for the history of why you chose it and it makes sense that you didn't wanna confuse it with the commissioner districts even though
Unless it was gonna follow the lines.
Unless it follows the lines.
Right, right, yeah, and that, that didn't make sense and as we, we know those change too.
Well, it's good to know for when we're asked next time.
Yes, yes, and, and logically, like you said, it goes from east to west because we start with zone one and usually end with zone one. So it goes east to west and then goes backwards when we
Right.
Release them, cause often, in the new wildfire reality that we live in we are extending those past September thirtieth, at least for district two and district one, or excuse me, zone, you got me doing it. Be in trouble. Because it just stays drier longer, I mean, September historically in the last, I don't know, twelve years at least has been when we've had our most significant larger wildfires, have started in the first week of September, so. Okay. Oh, and I know, I'm not sure, I think it's today on your consent agenda, the um, the letter requesting a burn ban variance by the Country Cafe in Lisle. Just wanna let you know, yes, I vetted that, the fire chief, and I agree, I have no concerns about that whatsoever.
And that's horse, or historically happened for the last number of years, correct?
Except for the last two, I believe it was, the last two years they didn't because of COVID. Yeah. And also in talks with the uh, Glenwood Fire District Gate Chief about uh, burn ban variance if if we decide that general burn ban needs to be in place for the west end, uh, zone three sooner than the Ketchum Calf Rodeo. The Ketchum Calf Rodeo Board is gonna consider asking for a variance for their uh, fire rings. And as you probably all know from being there, that facility is well maintained and they've got all the trees trimmed up, no brush and so as long as the fire chief doesn't have any issues with it, I will support that as well. Like I said, that event is well managed, both by the board and by the fire district out there, to make sure that nothing's gonna get out of control. I mean, fire wise, there's plenty that gets out of control at the Ketchum Calf Rodeo. And my efforts to update that burn ban code, um, have not been able to be haven't had the time, but we need to update that to be more more meaningful rather than just, you know, no open fires and barbe- residential barbecues will be allowed when you talk about what confuses the citizens or the public, that's what we get the most calls about. Can I have my propane fire pit, can I have this or that? What is a residential barbecue? So I very much wanna get that tightened up, but that'll have to be a project for another year. Any questions?
Nope.
Continued to conduct training and exercises, had a very good um training on a Thursday evening, April seventh and a Saturday, the ninth for hazmat. We had a training on the Thursday and a tabletop exercise on the Saturday, we invited, of course, all of our volunteers and then the fire district volunteers to participate in that. And the people that were there thought it was a good tool that we trained to and exercised. So we'll be continuing and offering that specific training to fire districts during their regular uh, drill nights. So that they can become familiar with it and it, and if they choose not to use it for themselves, at least they know it exists and they can ask the EOC for support to help them in that way with any hazmat incidents. Um, the emergent management program grants, you can see the activities there. One grant application is still out, all the others are in progress with active projects. As far as public education, we continue to carry out all those um, public education and information activities, the Golden Dale Home and Garden Show, sixth, seventh and eighth of next month. And then the Spring Fest on the fourth of June are the two things that are on our list and there's gonna be multi-prongs there, one specifically is getting people to sign up for the emergency notification system before they actually need it, i.e. before the wildfire goes through their community and they don't get the message and then they start calling frantically, how come I didn't get the message? So we'll be promoting that as well as the general preparedness and then as well as promoting more volunteers for our department as well as promoting people to apply for the nine one communications officer positions. Any questions about any of that?
Nope.
Okay, last on my list, uh, just to make you aware, um, been talking for probably at least a couple of months now with uh, Fire District Nine Roosevelt Commissioner. They've lost their chief, recent past, um, well, they've lost two chiefs in recent history, um, I have two commissioners out of three on the board now, Commissioner Jason Blaine and I have talked uh, repeatedly and extensively, they're having problems with uh, volunteers and, and the volunteers they have actually be able to show up, because a lot of the people that live there either have jobs that they can't get away from during the day or they work out of the area. So I've been offering support to facilitate you know, collaboration with other fire districts to uh, support them, because at this point, you know they've lost the historical knowledge of what they even have in the fire hall for trucks to a certain degree. Uh, he's, the fire district did hire just first of this month or end of last month. Um, they knew what they're calling uh, Chief of Operations to kinda get a handle on that. He's a mechanic and trying to inventory all their equipment and apparatus and those things, but they are struggling. But Fire District uh two and ten, Bickleton and Alderdale, have been, and rural seven, been very good about going mutual aid when they've got nobody showing up, or at least in a timely manner. And yesterday, we did have a vehicle fire that turned into a decent And yesterday we did have a vehicle fire that turned into a diesel tank explosion that turned into a uh, structure. I believe it was a workshop garage that burnt to the ground. But everybody did what they could and responded as fast as they could. Whether any of that could have been saved, no matter what is, you know, a question, but uh, we're doing everything we can, we we, the county has no authority over that special taxing district in their board, but I'm just offering them whatever support we can give them. As as, you know, we're a rural county, they're even more rural and remote from services, mutual aid. Anything else? Any questions?
Doesn't seem so.
Um, actually one, I was still playing on something else, um. Cameras in this building, is there plans for cameras in this building linked to um, emergency management or no?
Yes, sorry, I was looking behind me if anybody from Public Works is still in the room, um, yes, I was told originally that is the plan. We have not been given access, so how that looks in dispatch um, is still to be determined. Right now, the access that we have to the courthouse cameras is a single big screen monitor.
Right.
Half the size of that.
That's why I'm bringing that up, cause when I was there for that uh, event you had, I saw the the one for the courthouse, but I didn't see anything over here or parking lots or.
The the technical aspects of how we provide that to our comms officers, whether we add another monitor like that or whether it comes across, they're now limited screens and they have three screens for everything, you know, county data uh, and CAD data, we add a couple more screens to each station or we add a monitor still to be worked out between Public Works and IT and myself.
Did we Jeff, did we have um, monitoring in the annexes?
No.
For, so this would be an additional, as far as wh- what Commissioner Christopher's talking about.
Yes.
So this would be additional to what we historically had.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, in the county system, in in dispatch, we've only had access to the courthouse cameras. And then um, few of the schools um, remotely through the internet. So Golden Hill School District has an extensive camera system, White Salmon School District has an extensive camera system. And uh, then we had at least two cameras at all the other school districts in the county through that state program, that we could log onto the internet and look at if there was a report of an active threat at those facilities, but not something that we're now working on or dealing with uh, on a daily basis.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, you're welcome.
Go forth and do more good work. Okay, and we will take uh, the next thing on the agenda is at eleven, so we're gonna take a five minute recess at the seams.
I think that was your shortest report ever since I've been here.
Really?
Yeah, even got extended time and still the shortest report.
Doing everything I can to keep it at three pages.
Well, and because of your staffing, there's nothing to report, nothing to report, nothing to report changes. If you, if you had changes in there, there'd be more talking, but uh, staffing, you know, get it.
Yep.
Ms. Lee, what is the situation on the projector? Do you know? Cause I'm wondering if the thing overheated and burned itself out, cause occasionally that fan comes on now. Yeah, last week it was coming on, or a couple weeks ago it was coming on constantly and it wasn't even on. Long as somebody's working on it, I'm good. What's that? Um, I believe mics are still working. It was nice of you to wear a tie that matches my shirt today. Flating the whole time.
Lee, can you, um, you, I know you were watching, cause it's on the calendar, which is good, thank you, somebody was watching my exchange with Donovan Mickley yesterday. Can you send out an invite to uh, her and Mickey Ujikawa, their lands person? And then what are we gonna do, I said I reserve a at the Pioneer Center, there's always at least one.
What is this meeting for?
It's the Forest Service.
So I didn't recognize those names.
Donovan Mickley is the new, well, new, it's been like eight months now. Um, I think, yeah, that's tomorrow.
Do we need to come back from recess where we talked about that? Yeah, I know, but just clarification.
We are, we are back from recess now that all three are here.
I forgot we were still out.
Yeah, as far as that, he just wound up, whatever their their um, project is, I think, I think, cause he's meeting, they're, they're doing some work in Click It Tap tomorrow. As far as doing some planning work, and I think it has to do with uh, there may be somebody that knows more than I or has heard more, cause it's, it's my impression that it has to do with, I don't know if they're restarting. They, remember they had an effort like three or four years ago, the um, some kind of parking area, yeah, get I think that, I don't know if that, I get the impression that's restarting or something's going on there and they're so he and uh, one of their designers are gonna be in Click It Tap tomorrow morning and he had told me a month ago, we're gonna be there if you wanna get an update on what, what our plans are, and so I never say no to it, so. Well, I, I would.
I'm sorry.
Yes, to my house. It's just down the draw from my house, essentially you might as well say parallel the horse you've been going straight off.
Due due west, it's in the Swale Canyon, it kinda goes up both sides, it's right in the dead center of Swale Canyon.
Do you want me to bring it up on a map and you can look at it real quick?
We'll be talking about that shortly.
And apparently they reached out to other neighbors that I have out there requesting and see if they had interest in selling. So I thought that was interesting, I didn't get one, but um, I'm not on the right side of the road.
How are your solid waste meetings going?
I have one scheduled uh, tomorrow at one thirty, uh, check in with um, Steve, so.
So just starting.
Just starting.
Okay.
I did reach out after the um, personnel change and um, they, they wanna continue.
Okay.
Without, cause I did give them, you know, they needed the heads up and I know you had spoken with them, so they knew. But that, with that change thing, I'm sorry, I'm leaning forward after our comments of the, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be rude or lazy. So I'm making sure you can hear me, okay?
Well, I usually sit back so that everybody can see.
He sits back so everybody can see and then he gets far enough from the mic.
Right. Anyway, so we do, we have a, we have a, so yeah, this will be our first discussion post personnel change. About that, there, there was the, I had the check in just about, what do you wanna do as far as with it? Do you wanna pull it off, delay it, you know, until there's a, the department is um, either restaffed or restructured or whatever? And they said, no, they wanted to move forward.
Sounds good.
I have a couple of questions if we have time.
Yeah, I mean, we're waiting for Jeff, who's not supposed to be here till eleven.
Oh, just a quick update, I did reach out to a member of the Historical Society about the hallways and they're gonna transfer my information to um, the top of that chain and then they'll contact me and all the more, but that's all I know for now. Um, we talked about it before, but we haven't really made a decision, so I thought I'd bring it back up since it's come out of crunch time. Do we want a county booth at the fair? That would then be manned by different departments, potentially on different days, with potentially a pinup board of job postings. Um, like emergency management and planners and um, in a way for I guess I'd say more community outreach for, you know, but then we'd have to figure out who's sitting in the booth on what specific days. Or volunteers or what have you, but it's kind of a, an outreach idea.
Yeah, who, I mean, I mean, I've noticed before historic, there's been certain departments have booths.
Right.
Anyway.
Solid Waste is the only one.
Solid Waste, the sheriff, the sheriff's department's had one out there, economic development, yeah. Not in recent memory, though.
I would say, I haven't seen one for economic developments since I've been here. Just sheriff and.
That must have been back when you were. So when you left, they were like, nope, shut the booth down.
Well, that's kinda the next question that we'll have is, who's manning the solid waste booth?
Right.
You know, and and on those topics, who's handling the, the new Goldendale cleanup and, you know, we're, we're gonna have to have those discussions. But anyway, back to the fair booth, is there a need, is there a want, is there a? Do you think our departments would want, or are we putting?
Here they come.
To, to have to designate employees to staff the thing.
That's the part that's gonna get, I mean, are you thinking the entire thing or just the weekend?
I, I just brought it up, I, I don't have a plan or an idea or a, a whatever, I just, um.
We could put out a little.
We could buy a booth and plaster the walls of the booth and it doesn't necessarily mean you have to have somebody there, it's just county information, you know, that's another idea.
Or could we piggyback on somebody, you know, I'm, I'm thinking a solid waste always has a booth, could we kinda piggyback on theirs where we have a, you know, it's they're there, but there's other stuff and and folks at their option, cause it is, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea as far as the employment piece as far as what the current job listings, different stuff that that information was there, I don't know that is it worth it to have, you know, somebody there the whole week providing that or there's information is there and maybe they take a shift or two as far as that, or they could refer.
But I was just thinking that, that, well, the solid waste booth to give you a little better insight from the years I'm there. That booth is usually full, it's got five or six kids in it that are doing their work credits for school type thing. Um, I don't know that you're gonna find a lot of room in that booth.
I just thought that was the goodies they were handing out, but.
The metal straws and.
Whatever, just the.
So I.
And they have traditionally been, that's like, there's, there's lots of goodie stuff that comes out of that, out of that booth.
I just, I don't know that there's a lot of room there.
Okay.
Um, but it doesn't mean you can't have an easel or something if you just are only gonna throw stuff on an easel.
I guess the, the best thing I would say is, is we should poll our directors and see if they would like to have and put up information in a booth and if they or any of their staff would be looking to volunteer that booth in any of those times. And if we get a lot of uh, positive responses, then I think that'd be a good way to go, if everybody's like, nah, we're fine.
Cause I'd hate to have people have to man it nonstop, it, to me, it would be something like, you know, let's say building and planning are in it on Thursday, you know, economic development. Two or three others are manning it on Saturday, you know, two or three others are manning it on Sunday. Kind of a scenario versus somebody, A department has to man it for four days. Uh, and then you just have an agenda of who's manning it on what day and um.
Here, I saw you wanting to man it the entire time.
I would probably swing by and stand there for people to yell at occasionally.
I thought you were being at the duck tank.
I would sign up for a duck tank, cause I think we could probably buy a new building. Twenty dollars a ball, I think you got buyers.
Yeah. Or uh, you know, smash the solar panel.
Hey, I did not say that.
Dave, what do you think, should we uh, poll our?
I would, I, I like, yeah, I'd like to talk to the directors and see how much.
Electives and directors.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Cause I don't, I don't recall other, I don't recall ever see, you know, like the treasurer or the auditor, having a booth out there.
It's an election year, they're all gonna have this.
Well, they're all gonna have booth, but I mean, in the official capacity.
When I tried to do it, I was told no, for myself as a candidate, because nobody's ever done it in the past. But apparently there was somebody that did it like two years before me, because me pointing them out was the only reason I got it. So I don't think it happens often.
No, again, I was saying in an official capacity, like the treasurer's office or the assessor's office, not the candidate or anybody.
And that's what I said, I don't have a problem of electives being in there as long as they're not candiding and putting up their yard signs in the booth or something.
Now, that's, that's a big no.
Oh, that would make the newspaper, though.
Right. So yeah, let's uh, send a poll out to departments and electeds and.
Sounds good, um, you guys got that email from Charter Communications.
Yeah.
Um, so I've tracked that down a little bit and I'm gonna have lunch with him. It's early May, mid-May, um, and what they're talking about is um, they would do the uh, application grants, everything to the state, we would be the applicant, but they would write it all up. And then um, because they have a lot, they have people on staff writing these all over the place. And then they're looking at about a thousand households in the county that they would do fiber to the home to in areas that are high, high on their priority list.
And you haven't heard anything about a county match or a county donation or a county cost or?
Nope, no, they would, so, so that would be.
They can use our right away.
The, the grant would be our, the, may I speak?
Yes, sorry.
The grant would be pretty much our match that they're gonna write, you know, that would be our match, we're putting, you know, these public funds into it. And then they will be putting, the private side will be putting whether fifty percent or whatever, their match into it. To expand service coverage in three different areas.
Gonna be our grant match for the state grant or the federal grant.
Sure.
Their private dollars.
Using their private dollars.
See, all the ones that were contacting me were mentioning ARPA funds, so glad you found one that didn't.
Oh, that, that's what I said, I was like, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta put your skin in the game and that's what they wanna do and um, and they wanna do fiber to the home rather than just expand, expand the uh, you know, charter cable.
Were they, did they, did they mention yet if they were talking all throughout the county or specific, specific areas?
They have, they have three different areas that they're looking at, because it, they, it has to fit into all their criteria for their engineering design teams and everything else, but yes, of course, they would be looking at using county right away, just like the others, but I mean, the fact that we're, we're getting to the point where businesses are interested in ex, in, in doing, you know, fiber to the home, so you can assume that these are areas that are um, a little bit more dense, that are not as part of the cities, not within city limits but are more dense, suburbs, exurbs, um, that kinda thing.
Right.
Um, but still, it's, it's starting that.
It's not the last mile, but it'll give us something better than.
No, no, this is last mile, fiber to the home is last mile. It's not last mile to the last farm. The last farm at the end of Harms Road. That, that's, that's a different mile.
Okay.
But either way, it was really positive, um, the fact that, you know, the dollars that the state is, is putting out there is significant. Um, and significant enough to get, you know, these big companies coming to us now.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, I just wish that this is what would have happened under the CAF two dollars in the first place, that's what. I mean, I just wish that this is what would have happened under the CAF two dollars in the first place. That's what should have happened when Century Link expanded DSL everywhere.
Got a good update from McGett on that, so that, that educated me pretty good about that, that whole scenario back then, because that was all before my time, so.
The CAF dollars.
Yeah, I reached out to them and got a little bit of an update, so that was good on that. Something else I kind of wanted to bring up for, I don't know, board consideration. The hearing we're having this afternoon on the SEPA. I don't know, I mean, everybody's entitled to their comments as general or specific as they want to make their comments. But when we, when the chairman designates the time for public comment, I don't, I would prefer if we, if we said something or tried to tell them to try to be specific as possible because I, I wanna know, I mean, for me, you know, I wanna hear, I have a problem with this line and not just this, I have a problem with this in general, vote no. You know, what, what is your problem with this? You know, what line, what sentence, what, you know? But I don't know, we can, you can't obviously make him say that, but I just hope to get more information than just, oh, don't approve this because I don't like it. So anyway, that's an idea. And then the second thing I did talk to the prosecutor and he has had time to do a quick review of that draft, but he has not had time to go through the whole draft. And it would be probably a week or so if we wanted to let him go through the whole draft before we made a decision.
I had that same conversation.
Okay. Only thing I, other thing I kind of have for this morning is you probably remember we have an employee that thinks they're going to be leaving at the end of June. I have a feeling based on the housing market and some privy information that I, I guess I'd say I have a scare that it's gonna be the end of May. So we may not get that overlap that we're looking for. So I was wondering if the board had any interest on them focusing their potential last thirty days as opposed to the normal job of, of making up some kind of a binder with documents or flow charts or something to help the new person versus the new person just coming in and going, I have no idea what it is. Or something we may need to consider is retention of the old person on some kind of a temporary on-call casual available for phone calls.
Right.
For a certain amount of time, so think those things through and because, yeah, I think they're, the house sold before it even got on the market.
So I think you're probably right on the house being sold before it gets on the market.
That's what I heard.
That's any house.
I believe it's done and gone. I think it's all done.
So I remember when, when you first got elected, that was something that you, that you brought, like every position needs a binder so that anybody who steps into that, you know exactly, you know, here's the list, here's the lessons, here's, here's what I know and then, then each person can keep adding to that binder. I know certain departments are doing that and I think it's really helpful. And we should probably have that conversation about, you know, most of our departments doing that. I think that would be a very good idea in terms of, you know, the regular number of cases that come in. We, you know, you, I think we, we could direct, you know, see if what you can create, but also you still have the rest of the job that needs done too. But try to put that at a higher priority.
Yeah, I, I, I would just like to see something there. I mean, it ain't thirty days of work to create a binder, but when you think to something, open the page, take a note, add things to it, you know, conversations he's had with legal or flow of something or got anything and it's gotta be better than just throwing somebody into that position not knowing anything. I mean, he had a learning curve and the new person's gonna have a learning curve, but the learning curve's gonna be so much higher if we don't have at least a stepping point, so that would be my recommendation and, and as that, I'm willing to present that to the board chair to have that conversation or some, one of us to have the conversation if we so choose to get the binder thing started if that's something that we wanna go to.
What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, I don't know that I would, I mean, you're using the term binder, but it's, you know, anything, I think it's.
Files, I don't.
Yeah, it's always helpful as far as, or just sort of like it's instructions as far, here's kind of the processes that I, again, it's not, I mean, a new person may come in and completely do it different, you know, personally, my, I'm burning all my stuff when I walk out the door, but if there even was anything, because I didn't really get anything and I, I'm not leaving anything. Sorry, you'll figure it out. But no, I think it's a good idea as far as, but I would kind of leave it to that person as far as what they think is, you know, kind of like succession planning where you're trying to say, you know, here's the successes I had, the, you know, what worked and what I focused on.
Here's what I learned.
Here's what I learned, because he, he did, he sort of created it out of nothing almost.
And that's not necessarily, in my opinion, that the new person has to do it the exact same way.
No.
And they can say, well, I like this page, but my way works better. I'm taking this page out, but my page in. And I'm fine with that. At least it's something.
Something.
For the new person.
Because that's what if in a perfect world, we had overlap and we had, that's what would be going on during that transition period.
But how often do we have a perfect world?
Yeah, we never. I used to live in a perfect world until I discovered I did. I never did.
Yeah, when I, when I got elected, there was no binder for me. Later on, I found one that was created eight years before for commissioners, so that will be turned over to Lee to update for whoever's new sitting in your chair.
So discussed this with commissioners multiple times before. We have electronic binder and IT now that Jen uses, Public Works is interested in. HR is putting some stuff on there. IT puts standard operating procedures, forms. So rather than have a binder on a desk or on a shelf, we have an electronic ability for those things to be housed in this centralized software system, kind of interconnect. So I think as much as work with IT, get that stuff captured electronically is always better than factor that. Which is better than nothing.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with whatever shared drive a folder for that department and he stacked stuff in folders in there. I just have never seen anything on a shared drive in there, so I didn't know what they had access to or what the new person would have access to.
You can find with, with their own shared drive, those things get lost and then it's only leaves to get transferred to the new person and then you know, the G drive is filled up, so it's centralized. Help desk is what it started out to be, but that might be a good place to put these documents.
Sounds great. Would you like to have a conversation?
If you're the chairman, you can choose. I, I don't mind. If you wanna do it, you can. If you are too busy, I can. I just think somebody needs to.
If you do, then could you also have the conversation about that email we received?
Yep.
At the same time?
Yep.
Okay. All you, buddy.
You all.
All right. Anything else? Hopefully Jeff didn't get lost trying to get here.
Hey, I've reached out. I've not seen any messages from him or anything.
It's still.
It's early yet.
Actually, I'm just gonna go call him.
Okay.
Make sure he's not in the other building. He's been over here before.
Oh, that's true.
I don't think he's ever been here.
I've never met the guy.
If, since we have like eight minutes, do you just wanna turn the recording off?
Are we turning recording and mics and everything to save or are we?
No, just turn the recording off so that this is.
We're not wasting eight minutes of data?
Right. Pause it. Up, 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 up. Okay. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming and do you have anything to provide to us?
I do. Actually, I just had some excite, some of the reports that I've been generating. Thank you, sir.
All right, we will start this just a few minutes early so we can get to lunch. Airport manager Jeff Renard with Aviation Management Services is gonna give us our airport regional update.
Perfect. Can I get you to push that mic a little farther away from you? There you go. That way you're not blowing everybody out online.
I like that. It seemed really loud. As this is my first report, I'd be, I'm would gladly be guided through some of it if there's specific questions you guys would like to have answered and whatnot. The package that I gave you has just some, some interesting information and exciting news. This TLS brochure that's on the front, I just gave you just a brief overview page of it is a company that's on the Dallas airport building this transponder, transponder landing system on the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth will have the actual, the air force will be flying approaches on that to confirm if it's a viable system for them and if it is, we will end up getting a a potential grant from the FAA. They've said if, if they can prove it to the, to the air force and everybody gives a nod, then we'll end up with one of these instrument approaches on our runway three one. And it's just not a lot of detail for you on that at this point, but it's just exciting stuff that's potentially going to.
And that's a GPS instrument approach.
Correct. And I've got a, a bigger brochure. I just didn't print the whole thing for you guys. Just give a kind of a brief overview of what it is.
And would that be a hundred percent grant?
Hundred percent grant. And they've, ANPC has, and the Air National Guard have offered to write and manage the whole thing. All I have to do is sign it.
Wow, that's like bringing the airport out of the Stone Age kind of thing.
It, it's an incredible opportunity and there's so much of it that I don't even completely understand because I'm not an instrument rated pilot yet. But there is a lot of people excited about it. The air force being here to actually run the approaches is going to be a pretty neat, they're gonna bring a a CASA two ninety-five, if you look that up. It's one of their big turboprop aircraft that they're gonna be flying for two or three days here. It should be fun to watch and just hope that everything works the way we want it to.
We were worried for a long time because of the way runway three one and one three work that because of the mountains, we couldn't get an instrument approach coming down and the fact that this is, this is game changing.
Yes. One of the things, the runway seven two five that we presently have a you're the, you're the instrument guy, Jake, so.
I'm not an instrument rated pilot.
Oh, we have an approach on runway seven two five. I don't, it's LDA, I believe it's called. But our wind data with the FAA doesn't seem to favor what, that there's enough usage of that runway, so we have, we stand a chance of losing that from available blacktop, as they put it, or eligible blacktop, let me rephrase that. For funding from the FAA because the wind data doesn't support enough need of that runway. Well, the next couple of pages that I gave you.
Is this the one that runs north-south kinda? Which one are we talking here?
I don't have a map showing which one is.
They tore that one out a long time ago. That was a crosswind, crosswind landing.
Yeah, there were three, so there's one inactive, so there's still two active. One, so.
Pretty much the wind is always blowing down runway three one.
Right, I've just seen planes approaching essentially over the river.
That's runway three one.
Yeah, so the other one comes in more over.
The north.
Okay.
Saying on the other, you know, it was like a triangle, but it's, this leg is the three one, this is the other one.
Seven two five.
Seven two five and the other one, north-south was the one that's retired.
Yes.
So this north-south is retired here. This is the long one, it's three, so this is three one where the wind primarily blows and then two five is this one. And so this one right now is the instrument approach. And what these guys are gonna come in and do and they're gonna set up so that this can be an instrument, instrument approach as well. But forever, we were never, never thought we could have this as an instrument because of the mountains up here over the Dells to turn and go in. So, but they're thinking with the new GPS navigation systems, they can make that a full instrument.
And what it's designed around, the, I've been working with these, these folks the last couple of weeks. They've, they've actually packaged this unit onto a pallet that's just a little bit bigger than this table. It's a, well, about double the size of this table. It's designed to go in the back of a C one thirty or a helicopter. They shove it out the back with a parachute on it. Two guys go out with it, it lands in the middle of the sand or someplace and in with two guys in four hours, they have the thing set up and have an approach ready for inbound aircraft. And they've been, they've been practicing that and we packaged it up and I moved it with the forklift for them the other day, set it in a new place. They ran out, did their business and then they have one of our local pilots flying the approaches right now just practicing. And so it's it'll, like Jake said, it'll be, it'll be a game changer if we, if we can get that on the, on the airport. It'll change the traffic we can bring in there on the days that we normally couldn't fly. One of the other things I'm doing to help support that, these, there's a, a blue and orange document and I apologize, I see that the my margins must have been off, so it doesn't have the the actual criteria on there. This is a company called Motion Info Services. They track aircraft. It's actually marine information that they started with. Now they're tracking aircraft and I installed this, this equipment in August to start tracking all of our aircraft that are working at the airport. As of today, we've got, we've had, top left where it says operations, two thousand eighty-nine operations in that parameter from January seventh to fifth or two today. We've had, whether it be arrivals or departures, we've had two thousand eighty-nine operations at the Dells so far. And to be, I think to be able to track some of this, the sample of report with the tail numbers on it actually gives us the runway details, so I'm able to look and see how many how many different approaches or how many different times people have used each runway. Right now, there's been about, I apologize, I must have wrote on my notepad, my other notepad, the there's been like two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty departures from runway two five and, excuse me, two hundred and fifty from runway seven and three hundred and eighty-seven from runway two five so far this year. Dramatically different than the, than the big number that most people are using the three one, but it's going to give me the, the ability to track that at the end of the year and say, here's our, here's our need for this runway and I would like to, I don't know if you guys would like in the future, I'm gonna start doing for the airport board, provide a Friday report that'll actually have the link to this graph. I can provide that to you commissioners as well, if you would like in a Friday report.
You still want?
Yeah. That's sure.
Return down information.
Yeah, I'll make sure and have everybody's email address before I.
I just email.
Send it to B O C C.
And then she'll distribute to all three of us.
Okay. Perfect. Projects, we've got a, the design of the South Apron Grant going on. It's a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar FAA grant. We are in the design phase of that and plan on, as the design is finished, plan on taking that to bid this winter for a next spring construction. In that design phase of this, it would appear with our, our grant that we'll actually do the construction on that. We will have enough funding to add some additional tea hanger taxiways to the, to the airport. So one of my big projects between now and the time of construction is to find funding for building a couple more rows of tea hangers. Each of our rows of tea hangers generate about seventy thousand dollars a year in revenue for the airport, so feel that's a very important piece of our puzzle and we've got, I think, as it, I put two more people on the list yesterday and I believe there's thirty-one on the hangar waiting list right now. And Hood River's in about the same shape, so I've got, I know. And Hood River's in about the same shape. So I've got, I know some of the people on my list are cross-populated. So if Hood River frees something up, that number will change. But it's a.
It seems to be whatever we build there, the lists, the, the waitlist seems to just be maintained. It's always, like we fill it, and then within a very short period of time, the waitlist is back up where it was. So.
And as I thought through that last night, thinking about some of these bigger hangers and working on some design ideas for that. If there's not a vacuum of an empty hangar, we won't ever, we, most of the time, we won't even get a real call to have somebody there.
Right.
One of the topics at these resiliency meetings and these Cascadia event meetings has been the fact that the Dallas is probably the furthest west airport that will survive that event. And presently, we don't have any space to put disaster relief product or aircraft or anything. And so most of that, the resources are being stored in Hermiston or Pendleton or Moses Lake outside of our area, which is further, further east than they want to be. They want to, if something goes wrong in Portland, they want to be able to hop straight in there. So looking at that from a build it and they will come scenario and how to, how to best do that. The, the, the college project, that's one of the big, the Columbia Gorge Community College is trying to build the, they've got a grant they're working on with the EDA. And if that goes through, that will, that'll create nine more lots for aviation and non-aviation use in our business park over there. We have a visit on Friday, excuse me, on the 28th, lost track of my days, on the 28th from the local rep from the Seattle EDA office. We had the federal rep, Laura Ives here a month ago to look at the project. And now we've got the Seattle rep coming and that project is moving along quite nicely. Hopefully, we, they approve the grant and construction will get going.
This is the one that Richard's been working on for multiple years.
Got a hazard, I've got a application in for a hazard mitigation grant that FEMA put out. We made it to round two on that. I've filled in most of the blanks that I'm able to do and have employed Nolan Young to assist us in finishing writing that. He was instrumental in the flex space hangar where life flight's at. And he, he understands navigating that where that's one of my weaknesses yet. And look forward, look forward to working with him on that and hopefully, hopefully making it all the way through. I've got 150 approved, they, they approved us to the second round with 150,000 for removing our existing fuel tanks from the ground and $40,000 for hooking up our emergency generator to the runway lights and the fuel system.
Do you, do you currently have underground fuel tanks or they above ground?
They, we've got both. We just added the 24,000 gallons of above ground jet fuel. And then the existing fuel farm is in the ground out right in front of the FBO. And I would like to see, that's one of the, the big equations tied to this Cascadia stuff too, is they would like to see all those hazards eliminated. And this was a great opportunity to leverage some of that. I'm hopeful to finish, finish that grant and make it through. Tank removal. I've got my budget going in front of the city for this coming 22, 23 fiscal year. And that I'll share with you guys in the near future as well as it gets finished. Some of the projects we've got slated for, apparently, I'm not supposed to share it until after the budget meeting's announced.
I'd say it's awful early for 22, 23 budget, but. The city is on a fiscal year July.
Oh.
So it's, it's part of the confusion for us because ours obviously is January to January. And so our, our, our budget years are always off a half a year. Because it's the same thing. It's like, why are you talking about the budget? It's, it's April, but theirs is coming up.
They have to have theirs done by.
And then federal fiscal is October. And there's, so it's, and all the FAA interactions, it's very, it's very confusing. But yeah, with the city, because the air, that budget is, is housed with the city. And so he's on their cycle, not our cycle.
Makes sense. Probably the only other notes that I had for goals and projects for next year. We need to upgrade some fencing around the airport. I'm working with Tac Arrow to continue to help with the maintenance as far as grounds maintenance and making sure that everything looks appropriate. And at some point, we're going to need to replace some roofs on the, either the mobile home or the Quansett hut there, those hangers. It would be best in, in the upcoming grant cycles, the FAA actually has said that they're going to start funding terminal buildings, which is what we are in desperate need of.
Really?
So yes, I'm awaiting more detail on that. But they gave the, the nod that that is one of the things, one of the criteria, they had a opportunity here, but I only had four days to apply to, as I had Tracy May, our precision approach engineer, look at it real quick with me. And they want to see a passenger count. They want to understand what our terminal is used for and what that looks like. So again, part of that was getting this data as far as what, what aircraft are coming in, why they're there, and how many passengers are they moving through? Is it, all the numbers have changed dramatically since COVID with the amount of charter jets we have come in that people just aren't getting on a commercial airliner. They're spending the extra money and, and chartering a jet. Fly right into the Dallas. They get out, they have Enterprise waiting for them. And the jet flies off and comes back in a week and picks them up. A lot of these jets we're having come in are hunters, fishermen, and windsurfers, kite surfers. Seems to be the, the biggest majority of what, who's going in and out of there. And they're business owners as well. I mean, but they're, the reason for coming into our area is to go for the recreation. That's about all I have unless you have any questions.
So one other thing is, is 2021, you can look at the fuel flow numbers. And we've, the airport has just been blowing out the records in terms of fuel sales. A lot of that, you can see, you know, June, July, August, a lot of that's due to the firefighting equipment that's being stored at the Dallas Regional Airport. Jeff, would you like to talk a little bit about what we're expecting and what we're hoping for this year?
Yes. Sorry about that. Apparently, I didn't put one of those in my stack. Yes, the numbers have just continued to increase as far as fuel sales. There's a real good possibility this year, we, we're going to have four Fire Boss aircraft at the airport, two from the Oregon contract and two from the Washington contract. Still trying to finalize that. One of the big challenges we're seeing right now that I just brought up with ODOT is with the bridge being closed on, from Friday, or from Thursday night at 8:00 PM until Monday morning 6:00 AM, those guys are all housing themselves in motels on the Oregon side. We need to potentially figure out how we can leverage, I know they're allowing emergency services, the ambulances to go across the top of the dam. But on the weekend, if I need to get to the airport, Friday, Saturday, Saturday or Sunday, it's an 85 mile round trip to accomplish that.
Do we know, now, I don't know, I believe, and I'll, I'll see that, because I, I think the plan is for the summer, that'll all be suspended.
June and July. So as soon as it's going to be open, I talked to the gentleman from Hamilton Construction, that's the foreman on the bridge job. He said that they will be open from the point when, when cherries start, need to start moving to the cold packers until, until the end of the cherry season. And then it will reclose for what looks like about eight or nine more weeks on top of that. But that is in the prime of our fire season.
Okay.
The end of cherry season.
Jeff? Sorry, he was, or Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I'm the emergency management director. I can help you get across the dam.
Okay. I think that's going to be one of those things that we really need to make sure that the, the Fire Boss guys can get, and myself. I mean, I don't need it nearly as bad as they're going to, but it's, it's going to be very important to make sure they have access or housing on that side of the bridge.
We should be able to include them and you and the emergency responder and support personnel that we already have permission to access across the dam.
Okay.
That sounds great. And if not, we need to find a way to put some trailers or something over there.
Yeah. Yeah, create housing and again, the, the whole food aspect, every, every bit of it for those, those four days, three and a half days that they can't, they can't get access.
Yeah, I'm well aware. I always want to seem to, or need to go to, it's always Friday and Saturday.
Yeah, it's not, it's not good. Unless you have any other questions, that's probably what I have at this point.
I have a non-related question for you.
Absolutely.
Can you point me on the map where the potential development golf course area is going to be? Take my mouse if you need it.
So this is on, the Sun Dune property is sitting on this property, this property. They wanted it, the original idea was to have a golf course around here and out in here. And then some, some stuff over in, on the airport property, but.
And then this is housing up there.
Yeah, and this is housing.
That's what I figured over there, me too. Yeah, okay.
Who knows how long that, that is away. Whenever they start talking about, you know, developing that, I usually, I figure there's a big crash coming. It just seems to happen.
Well, I just hear it occasionally, but I've never, you know, yeah, it's, I mean, it's 10 years, 10 of the same kind of speech. I've just never heard what properties. So since I was looking at the map, I figured that'd be a good time to ask.
Um, any other questions for the airport manager? All right. Thank you for coming up and introducing yourself, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, anything else for the good of the order? If not, I would entertain a motion to recess for lunch.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recess for lunch, be back at 1:00.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to recess for lunch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. See everyone. Being that it is 1:00, we are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickatack County Board of County Commissioners to order. Please let the record show, all three commissioners are present. We will begin with our pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the commissioner meeting minutes for March 29th, April 5th, and April 12th as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion to approve the minutes of.
March 29th.
March 29th, April 5th, and April 12th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, although let the record try, I will abstain on the 5th since I was gone. They looked fine, but I read them, see what you guys.
You didn't watch the video?
Yeah, no, I did not watch the video, but I did read the minutes.
All right. With that, motion carries. All right, we are going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. At 1:25, the board will follow up with any comments if they so choose. I will please note, we have a public hearing for 1:30 for, to consider the SEPA ordinance. So if you would please not give any public comments on the SEPA ordinance until we open that public hearing, that would be great. With that, I will open the meeting for citizen comment. If you have a comment, and as always, we start in the room. Is there anybody who would like to provide comments? Not seeing any. We will go online. I see that Vern has his hand raised. Mr. Harpool, your three minutes begins when I open my.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Vern, can you unmute yourself?
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Still muted, sir.
Let's see.
Oh, so he's not muted. You have a problem with your audio. You might need to use the audio from your phone.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll work on it.
Can't, can't hear me now still?
Cannot hear you.
He's not muted by us.
Yeah, your showing is not muted, but you don't have audio.
Mr. Chairman.
So I'm guessing you either didn't turn on audio or you need to call from your phone.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Hello?
We have all sorts of weird things. Department of Emergency Management is talking.
I can hear you, Vern.
Okay, Vern, call us from your cell phone. That would be great. And we'll give you a chance.
It's our problem, apparently.
Oh, no one can hear. Okay.
Not your problem, Vern. Sorry.
Working on it if you can read our lips. Hold up a sign.
Technical difficulties.
Vern, we are going to deduct this from your three minutes, so.
Oh, she said, Brenda chatted, said those, they can hear him talking on him. And so it is, it's, it is our end. Thank you, Brenda.
Then it doesn't have to do with the mic. It has to do with our speaker.
Our speaker, it must be off.
Hello, hello.
Yeah, sir. You have, you have three seconds, three seconds remaining, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Vern.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, Vern. Your time starts now.
Hi, um, thanks very much for allowing me to come to see you today. Vern Harple from Lisle. I am here to report again on the sandbar, but we had an incident. I think Commissioner Soder may know about it. On Saturday, 4/23, someone was, a kiter was injured down in the sandbar. Because of the barriers and all of the stuff that's in the way, our, our local EMS didn't have enough people to transport the person up and had to call for backup and ended up with three more EMS vehicles to finally get the person in a litter over all the barriers. We've been predicting this and it's happening. It's, it's just an absolute danger. So I'm hoping that this will give Commissioner Soder some time to talk. But what we're asking, as your sort of de facto mayors for us, is that you set up a meeting immediately with the Forest Service and the BNSF folks to get those barriers taken down, put up some sort of safe passage until all of the other stuff can be worked out. People are getting hurt. It's getting worse. It's a mess. We've been trying to advocate to get this done. And so far, we're getting no response from anybody. So, you know, we need to build a fire under the Forest Service. As far as our research goes, we know that there is a legal in-place easement across those tracks that the Forest Service has. And they're not acknowledging it or something. So anyway, please have at those two big folks for us little people in Lisle to save lives. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will go back in the room. Does anybody like to provide public comment? As long as it's not on the hearing, if it's on anything else, you're more than welcome and you don't give up your time in the hearing either. Would you, would you like to provide public comment? Please come forward, Cherry.
Are the mic screen up there?
Yes. Okay. I didn't really prepare much. So as you know, under canvas was approved by the judge. It also, they will not have to be monitored for water. This is very upsetting to the people who live in the area. Again, I want to remind the commissioners, we are very terrified with wildfire. There is no evacuation plan. There cannot be an evacuation plan as our fire chief is not an expert and he testified that he cannot approve an evacuation plan. We are scared. I am scared of that intersection that I have to leave every day with a line of sight on the bridge, onto the highway. I'm scared for the people who recreate there with hundreds of transient tourists not knowing. I'm scared for the people who recreate there, with hundreds of transient tourists not knowing our area. This is a setup for deaths. This is a setup for deaths. This will hurt our environment, but I'm scared for our people out there. I'm scared for me. And this, this has been pushed through using a conditional use permit. You've come against us people, we've reached into our pockets. We fought against our own government approving this on us, while you used our money to fight against us. And I feel it shameful. And when the deaths happen, who do the people turn to? Do they turn to Clickatuck County, who said this was okay to be there? Do they turn to the hearings examiner you pushed this off on, who said it's okay to be there? Do they turn against the judge, who said this project's okay to be there? This is very shameful, and this is gonna happen with solar. This is how you're gonna push solar on prime farmland. There's a reason that farmland's valuable. It's the future of your food, of your, for your children. When it's destroyed, it's gone. You can't take it back. When the deaths happen on Oak Ridge Road and at that intersection of Oak Ridge and Highway 141, you can't take back those deaths. And you are three men who are in charge of these decisions, and you need to be looking out for the, your people. This is what you were supposed to be elected to do. The health, the safety, and the general welfare of us, and projects like this, that are deadly, that are ruining an environment. You have a lot of responsibility, and I am asking you to look inside yourselves for the future of this county. These are big decisions you're making. Really, look inside yourselves, the future. If you have children, if you have grandchildren, where's their food gonna come from when they take that valuable farmland? It's not about solar. They're going after valuable farmland. And this is concerning. This should, should concern you. And please, please, these decisions that you are allowing to happen to us with conditional use permits are deadly.
Thank you, Ms. Basque. I will now go online. If you'd like to provide public comment, raise your hand, unmute your phone with star six, turn your video on, get our attention. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, we will go back in the room. If there's anyone who'd like to provide public comment in the room. Okay, well, we will open it up to anyone who wants to get our attention. Till then, I have some things to say. 7211.
Greg Wagner with seats. I'd like to know what good does it do to get your attention? We've tried to do that for 17 months now on the solar issue and the Under Canvas issue, and you recuse yourself from making your, doing your job and making decisions. You pass the buck, as old Mr. Christopher blamed the commissioners in Douglas County, passing the buck. And that's what you're doing. You're passing the buck to the hearing examiner for the Under Canvas. You recuse yourself, so you don't have to do your job. You guys are derelict in your duties. You need to step up and do your job, but we, we know that's never gonna happen from you commissioners. All you care about is what you're getting out of it. You don't care anything about the citizens in this county. You guys are despicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. If there's anyone else who would like to provide public comment, we are here and glad to listen. So this is public comment. If you would like to talk on the SEPA ordinance, that will be at 1:30. If you have just public comment on anything else that you'd like to give, your name, and what you'd like to talk about, we'd be happy to give you three minutes.
My name is Jack. Have an anxiety disorder, so I tend to get a little emotional. Forgive that. My name is Jack, I'm a Goldendale resident. When I first moved here in October of 2020, I just happened to be playing with my stereo tuned in the radio, and I'm hearing Greg Wagner talk about the shenanigans that are going on, and I was appalled at what Mr. Soder and his previous seatmates have hidden from people all these years. You know you did. And, and the other, the other gentleman here, I noticed when Sherry was talking, not one of you, Soder looked up once, but the other two of you didn't even look her in the eye. Give your constituents some credit here. At least pay attention. I have to agree with Greg. You're, you're really not doing a very good job. And hearing the radio station this morning, I'm sure, I've, I've, I've heard that all three of you listened to that radio station and hear the comments people are making. Even elderly people are saying, the three of you should be recalled. You have failed in your duties, and I don't even know what purpose I'm here for, because I know you won't listen to us. You've proven that over and over. You did it with Under Canvas, you did it with the taxes, you're doing it with the solar, solar issues. Who knows what other things are hidden we don't even know about? I'm, I'm, quite frankly, I'm embarrassed to have the three of you as our county commissioners. Any response? No?
We, we would give our response at 1:25, sir. Okay, we will continue to open it to public comment. If anyone online would like to get our attention, star six, raise your hand, turn your video on, unmute yourself. Or anyone in the room who would like to provide public comment. Please come forward.
Yes, Kathy, unmute yourself.
Okay. Kathy Moko, Goldendale. I've been attending these meetings for quite a while now, and I also listen to the talk show a few mornings a week on the radio. And I've also known two of you commissioners for many, many, many years, and the prior commissioners for many years, and I think you all do a wonderful job. The idea that somebody can say that you aren't thinking about our county is despicable. Most of the people that are saying this are people that are new here, and if they really think it's that bad here, maybe they should go back where they came from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moko. Okay, back online. If anybody has any public comment. Elaine Harvey.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Elaine Harvey, Clickatuck County resident. Mostly a lifelong resident, besides the time I left to go to college. I'm also a tribal member. A Yakima tribal member, and my family's been here since time immemorial. We were the first. And we're getting impacted by these green energy, so-called green energy projects. Our band, the Comispo Band from Mark Creek, we're the first people of this land. And we're getting impacted by the wind, the solar currently, and proposed, and the proposed water pump storage project. I didn't come from anywhere. My family and our band in the Yakima Nation hasn't come from anywhere. We're from here. And this county is within the Yakima Nation's seeded lands, where we retain our treaty rights to practice our traditional ways, fishing, hunting, gathering. And these projects cumulatively impact our way of life. Especially on the, on, if they include state and federal lands, including these solar projects that have DNR parcels on it. And when they're doing these solar projects, and they're building on the DNR parcels, they're infringing on our treaty rights. And I heard commissioners say before, oh, yeah, we're gonna have these solar projects because the DNR feels it's best fit to have solar on those lands. Well, I don't believe so, because we've been practicing our, our traditional gathering on these lands for thousands of years. Now all of a sudden, the best fit use is solar, which is only 22% efficient? I don't think so. And we're getting impacted by these projects currently at Roosevelt, Lynn Hill, Bluebird. They are building a solar project on our root grounds, where we gather food, and we're gonna lose out. 50-year leases, 40-year leases. They're totally removing the top soil in the shrimp-step habitat there. We're losing. There's many projects planned in Clickatuck County in the future, solar. And they will, cumulatively, they're gonna impact all our deer. And what about the deer hunting? That's gonna have an impact on our hunting, that you guys all love, economy-wise. So, I just wanna share that now with, because I just feel like, it's not taken seriously. There should be laws that regulate solar to protect the environment, our citizens, our water, the Yakima Nation cultural resources. Like I mentioned, we're here. We're not going anywhere. We're never gonna leave this land. We never immigrated here, we're never gonna immigrate out. We're here forever. We're not like others, can just get up and move. This is our land, this is our resources. This is our air, this is our water. These are our mountains. That's all I'm gonna share.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Okay, we have time for one more, either in the room. If somebody would like to raise your hand, please come forward, ma'am.
Last night, I have permission to tell this story. Lithium battery. This is what you plug in for your.
Right, I was asking for the name for the record.
Oh, Kenny Magnuson, 69 battery, wrote, okay. Last night, my friend, Paulette Lefebvre-Holbrook, she put hers on, she plugged it in, okay, at 7:30 last night. At 10:30, she was in bed, her fire alarm went off, okay? She ran out into her kitchen. This was burning. This was burning. It exploded, burning high. She was smart enough not to put water on it. She was smart enough, she had a fire extinguisher, but she didn't know what chemicals in the fire. Okay, extinguisher, because it has to be the correct one. She put a pan underneath of it and put a wooden, like a cutting board in front of her face. And she ran from here to that wall, out her door, and threw it out. And as she was going, it was exploding, the sails in here are exploding. She burnt a path all the way to outside. The fire, the fire jester came. The damage is $26,000 in her house because of the smoke in her kitchen and her living room. That's from this little thing. And we're supposed to have two acres in a shed of the great big ones. And it's supposed to be safe. Our fire department, do they know how to put them out? Because if you look them up on your phone, you can look them up, lithium batteries fires, and you're gonna find out how long, what it takes. They have to smother it. So, I just wanted to tell this, because this is dangerous. Where these batteries are gonna be is up by trees, farm land, on farm land, and stuff like that. So, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Magnuson. Okay, we have time for one more. If anybody online would like to provide public comment. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Commissioners. Oh, Tracy, you have, if you'd like to provide public comment, please. Give us your name, and we'll give you three minutes.
Okay, it's Tracy McCune, I'm from Lisle, Washington, and I'm calling on a couple things. One is, um, so, the, the letter for the variance for the Country Cafe in Lisle, it, it, it references a couple letters and emails. One of them is a letter dated April 19th, which states, Clickatuck County Fire Protection District is requesting on their behalf a variance to the burn ban, because this would economically benefit our community. We ask the variance be considered. In a separate line, it says, Lisle Fire Department requests variance with the following conditions. My question is, is it appears that Lisle Fire Department or Lisle Fire District is separate than Clickatuck County Fire Protection District? And I wondered, which one is paid from property tax, and how is the other one paid? That's the first question. The second question, I wanted to know, what are the benefits of withdrawing from the Washington Rural Counties Insurance Program and joining the Washington County Risk Pool? The pros and cons of that. And the last thing is, on the, with the Microsoft, with the Microsoft licensing that you're wanting to purchase, on the Microsoft signature form, it states, the customer can be the signing entity, enrolled affiliate, government party, entering into a, a volume licensing agreement. With regard to the Microsoft and legal entity that Microsoft owns, that owns Microsoft, or, or is under common ownership with Microsoft, I wanted to know how you vet this, this person, this customer, and the entity that you're joining or having give those licensing. How do you vet them? And how do you do securities to make sure that this is a good company and doesn't have, uh, well, that it's a good company? And then, also, I wanted to know, since you're putting that under Clickatuck County, are you making sure that all of the county are doing as your IT department at the, in the county? And making sure that the Chinese products that were banned, because they're a security threat, that they're banned throughout the county that you're gonna be giving these licensing to? Or do you just ban the, the Chinese products in, in the commissioner's office or in the county itself? I know that Jeff Rowe has stated that, that those items cannot be used in the county. Does that include all the districts as well? That was my question.
Thank you, Ms. McCune. Okay. I would open it to my seatmates to respond to any of the citizens.
All right. I'll try to be quick, since we're short on time. To Sherry Basque and Under Canvas, I would like to clarify that this is not us pushing anything. We are bound by laws. We can't circumvent said laws because certain people want us to, to, to fit in their ideals of what we should be doing. And as the judge just ruled, we were following the law. And he found nothing against this board or this county doing anything wrong on that case. I would clarify that I believe you might want to relook at his 20-page report that he gave, because he upheld, if I'm remembering correctly, the hearings examiner's water issues that you said are not gonna be there. water issues that you said are not gonna be there. Those are two things that the judge did uphold. I'll go on to Jack about, do we listen to the talk show? I can tell you myself, no, I don't, because it's ninety-nine% propaganda and incorrect information. Just like the information you just heard. Why are we not paying attention to the speakers? Because I'm taking notes. I'm looking up a twenty-page court document so I can give her the correct information. I heard everything she said. I was multitasking. Kathy, thank you. Tracy with the Country Cafe, the benefits of switching insurance carriers. I said on that board, we have not looked into it in this county for the last decade. I'm in charge of being fiscal with taxpayer funds, so I wanted to make sure we did look into that. We are gonna be able to drop our current insurance from roughly $1.4 million down to $700,000 roughly. So it's a cut in half without pretty much losing any type of coverage, which sounds like a darn good deal to me, so that's why we're doing it. Yes, IT vets the owners of all the different companies to make sure they're not Chinese-owned and they cannot be hooked up to our IT service. And no, that has nothing to do with junior taxing districts or fire halls or whatever, because they don't connect to IT's countywide service. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Sorry, it took too long.
No, thank you very much, sir. Commissioner Satter.
Quickly, I would, I also was looking in the judge's order. Yet you are incorrect. Conditions nine and sixty were upheld, which are the water metering, the 5,000 gallons per day. And they must cease operations if they exceed that daily requirement. So I know it's, it's a long, I mean, there's more than sixty conditions, so it was a long ruling, and I had just read it through once, because I was, I, when you said that, it did make me, I thought, oh, that's not what I thought I read, but I wanted to be sure. So I understand the confusion. It's easy. Mr., is it Mr. Compton? Something like that. Jack? I would also, I don't listen to the talk because, as Commissioner Christopher said, and I, and I really want you to consider that perhaps what you're hearing on there is not the truth. And it's not factual, that it is not, that it is outright misinformation and lies part of the time. So I just want you to have an open, I know, I'm just saying that to just consider that, that perhaps, and I would also to Mr. Wagner about the, that we are not interested in what our citizens, first off, I also have lived here. I have, I'm not from anywhere else. I am from here. I was born in White Salmon, and I will, I have one more move in me, which is up the hill from my house to the cemetery. I'm not going anywhere. And so I, I take offense when people call me despicable that I am not looking after the interests of the citizens. Frankly, sir, how dare you? How, no, no, I'm sorry, sir, this is my time. And free speech works both directions. I'm not being rude or insensitive. I'm just saying, I personally find that that is despicable, that we are not gonna get anybody to do these jobs that are under constant attack, that is not supported by the facts. And so I am, I am happy to go, I don't have any problem. I am from here. I, I think the vast majority of people support the job that I have done and this board and previous boards have done. You are listening to a very small, very vocal, very misinformed minority of the county.
I have heard you people contradict yourself on your, your meetings with the radio station. I've called it out. So don't tell me I'm hearing baloney, because I've heard you, last Thursday, say we are required to follow the rules, yet you didn't. On Under Canvas, you avoided the Board of Adjustments.
Again, sir, we, we followed the rules and the judge upheld everything that the county did, on every single count. So that is your opinion. The judicial system does not agree with you. But I guess the judicial system is also misinformed or in on the take or whatever it is.
I would love to say something, but being it is one thirty-three, we are already late for our public hearing on the SEPA ordinance. And if anybody would like, as always, I am completely open and I would talk to anyone at any time. And if anybody would like background information, historical knowledge, I would agree with my seatmates that, that if you only hear one side of a story, you're likely not hearing the full truth. And I just try to keep that open, that there are multiple sides to every story. But usually, when a judge rules, they're required to rule on the facts and the facts alone. With that stated, we are going to close public, the public comment and open the public hearing. And this is a hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Clickatuck County Environmental Ordinance Number 121084 under the State Environmental Policy Act, RCW 4321C120 and the SEPA rules. Also, WAC 197-11-904, and to hear the public comments in favor and opposed. So I am considering this public meeting, or this public hearing open. And we will start with the staff to provide a brief overview.
The proposal today is to consider a procedural amendment. Sorry. The proposal today is to consider a procedural amendment to the county's environmental review procedure. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt local SEPA procedures and policies implementing SEPA under RCW 4321C120 and WAC 19711904. The main revision in this proposal is focused on the administrative appeal process. The proposal eliminates the administrative appeal for all non-project actions. For example, adoption or amendment of development regulations or comp plan update. The proposed, the proposed amendment will continue to offer administrative appeal on project actions. For example, site-specific proposals such as conditional use permits, plating process. RCW 3670B requires a local project review process to integrate land use and environmental review to run concurrently and not separately. It also requires no more than one open record hearing and one closed record appeal. Because of these overlaps and requirements, the proposed changes in Section 7C and the county code Section 20.28.030 is intended to clarify the administrative appeal process. Note, the permitting process is already in place. The proposed amendment does not change the hearing process or hearing body. Rather, it just simply provides clarity on the process. There's a flow chart in your packet, and the flow chart is an attempt to assist readers to understand the process when there are challenges to a SEPA determination and how the SEPA administrative appeal process would integrate with different permit types. The proposed amendment to the environmental review procedure is intended to increase code clarity and to provide consistency implementing the adopted rules and regulations. An amendment to the county's SEPA procedure is exempt from SEPA review. That concludes the staff summary.
All right. We are going to open this hearing for the purpose of hearing public comments in favor and opposed to considering the proposed amendments to Clickatuck County Environmental Ordinance 121084 under the State Environmental Policy Act, SEPA, RCW 43.21C.120 and SEPA rules, WAC 19711904. We will start, we have a list here of people in the room who have written down their names who would like to do, provide public testimony. And then what I'm gonna do is I'm going to change it up and do all of the names on here, and then I will move online. So if you wouldn't mind waiting for just a little while, Ms. Arnold, we will begin with the first name that's typed here, Ms., Ms. Basque from Houston.
I have to go first?
Your name was first on the list.
Are we limited to three minutes?
Usually, yeah. Yeah, as is normal, it is three minutes.
Well, I oppose the changes. Wow, I'm really on. Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna say I, I, yeah, I didn't really hear what Mochi said, so I have had an opportunity to review.
I'm gonna start the numbers. Would you like to hear Mochi give it one more time?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad, if you would not mind rereading that.
Can you hear me? Okay. I apologize. Let me try again. The proposal is to consider a procedural amendment to the county's environmental review procedures. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt local SEPA procedures and policies implementing SEPA under RCW 4321C120 and WAC 19711904. The main revision in the proposal is focused on the administrative appeal process. The proposal eliminates administrative appeal for all non-project actions. For example, adoption or amendment of development regulations or comp plan update. The proposed amendment will continue to offer administrative appeal on project actions, i.e. site-specific proposals such as conditional use permits or short plans or long plans. RCW 3670B requires a local project review process to integrate land use and environmental review to run concurrently and not separately. It also provides for no more than one open record hearing and one closed record appeal. Because of these requirements, the proposed changes in Section 7C or KCC Section 20.28.030 is intended to clarify the administrative appeal process. Note, the permitting process is already in place. The proposed amendment does not change the hearing process or hearing body. Rather, it simply provides clarity on the process. The flow chart is an attempt to assist readers to understand the process when there were challenges to a SEPA determination and how the SEPA administrative appeal process integrates with different permit types. The proposed amendment to the environmental review procedure is intended to increase code clarity and to provide consistency implementing the adopted rules and regulations. Amendment to the county's SEPA procedures is exempt from SEPA review. That summarizes staff summary.
Thank you, Director Lindblad. Okay. Ms. Basque?
Thank you. Thank you for redoing that. So I'm here to say that I oppose the changes to the SEPA appeal process and specific the non-project actions for updating of the comp plan, that I believe that our commissioners should stay in the decision-making process. And to, I feel when you tell us there is no administrative appeal process, you are telling us that we need to get an attorney and take our county to court. We just saw how that happened, and I do see how Under Canvas won. And maybe the judicial system does have stake in that game as well. I don't know, but it is dangerous. I don't feel that that SEPA was evaluated correctly. I don't see how these SEPAs and these environmental impacts are going to be evaluated correctly or with any sort of expertise when it comes to these large solar industrial complexes. I think our, the, I oppose these changes because I want things to be kept legal or local. I want these Board of Adjustments, these planning commissions, local people to be involved in the conditional use permits. I don't want these things tossed off to a hearings examiner. He's one man. He's one man. He's not local people. You told us that you were gonna keep our voices local. And by taking away any administrative appeal when it comes to our comp plan update, this means rezoning. And it's not fair to make us hire attorneys and fight you. You should listen to the people. We are the local experts. And I think you should continue to charge million-dollar projects for staff time. This is our, we, us taxpayers pay your staff time. And we would like these larger corporations to pay for this and not make us pay for it. You are working with foreign entities, corrupt foreign entities. These, these energy companies, I've informed you, they have lawsuits against them. Environmental harm and racketeering. I've informed you of this. You're working with them. When does this become any sort of exception to our government? These, these foreign entities don't care about our food for our future. And by giving this to a hearing examiner, you give away local decision-making. I'm asking you to continue to have oversight. Don't toss this off to hearings examiners. Take it serious. You know how I feel about this. Because I feel you are not working for the, the safety of the future of this county. So please keep the decision-making local when it comes to non-project actions. Observe them. Observe them. Don't just make us have to lawyer up and fight you in the back alley. I don't understand why you want to get rid of your decision-making. I do understand, so then your hands aren't dirty in the game. So I oppose this. I oppose these changes. Keep it local.
Thank you, Ms. Basque.
Kenneth McCune, five nineteen East Broadway, Goldenville, Washington. I have to concur with most of what Ms. Basque just said. Right here on page ten of this proposal, it says the county recognizes that each person has a fundamental and inalienable right to a healthful environment and that each person has a responsibility to contribute to the preservation and enhancement of the environment. How does putting 8,000 acres of solar panels enhance the environment? You don't know if there's any opposition out there that the silent, maybe the silent minority, the silent majority, or whatever. Most people aren't gonna come in here and take the time to testify on this. Most people don't even know this is happening. But to, to make the appeal so costly for people to appeal your decisions and to, to pass it off to a hearing examiner, somebody that doesn't even live around here, has no connection with the people or the land, it just doesn't seem right. You're gonna, let's see, appeal an environmental threshold determination on a project action subject to an open record hearing before the Board of Adjustments. You know, it's just, just a bunch of godly good. I mean, it's redundant. And if you don't want to make it simple, then just leave us alone. Leave us to our, our, our natural environment and quit trying to stuff this stuff down our throats. You know, people with billions of dollars seem to have a, a big influence over government. And then the little guys, they gotta live with the repercussions of it all. I support the Native Americans, their fight. They've been around here a lot longer than me. My family's been here 140, 40 years. On my dad's side, my mom's side, over 100 years. I grew up out there in, in Spring Creek, where it's gonna be surrounded by them, if you allow this to happen. And I'm, I like solar myself. I got a solar panel. It's the scope of it, the footprint that you're leaving for future generations to deal with. It's gonna be a junk, pile of junk out there in maybe ten, fifteen, 20 years. Who knows how long it's gonna last? So consequently, I think they, I mean, Dan's got the right idea. You gotta have the prosecuting attorney hadn't even read it yet, so you can't make any decisions today, I realize that. But I want to hear what he has to say about it. A lot of this is just redundancy.
Thank you, Mr. McCune. Next, we have Mr. Next, we have Mr. Barta.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dave Barta, Goldendale. I recognize we're all kind of in a place that we'd rather not be. Sometimes we find ourselves in a place where the law of unintended consequences catches up with us, and I think that's kind of where we are. You know, however we may disagree on a topic, I want you to know that you are in no way despicable. And you are right now, you have a difficult job, and it is thankless, and I recognize that. So for my comments regarding CEPA, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really just want to focus my brief comments on the practice of combining appeals, as stated in the draft flow chart for CEPA. I understand RCW 4321C and WAC 19711 drives quite a bit of that process. However, wherever possible, I hope that you as a legislative body, for me, a citizen, will defend the right for a constituent like me to participate in that democracy. There are any number, as you know, of individuals and governmental entities, some sovereign, who can appeal any CEPA determination and immediately force a combination with the conditional use permit appeal that I have, as I understand what is written. That would probably cause me to lose the right to appeal to fellow Clickatack County citizens potentially on the Board of Adjustment, and instead it'd be combined. And as members of the BOCC have stated, it very likely would go to a hearings examiner. I would much rather, as Ms. Bosque said, keep it local. I, I personally feel, and I think I've said, I hope I've conveyed that, I think that civil deliberation is a far better method for solving these issues than certainly than ranker, than hiring an outside examiner, or even worse, legal challenges that piss citizens against each other. I just ask you to do everything possible that you can do as you look at this appeal process and the potential of combining appeals to keep the conditional use appeals within our county adjudicated by citizens who live here. Thank you for your time.
And I, I said I was gonna go through the people in the room first, and then I will get to the people online. Thank you, Mr. Barta. All right, next up, we have Jack from Goldendale.
Yeah, I want to basically mirror what Sherry said. I oppose changing the CEPA ordinances. I've found it very timely, shall we say, that right during the middle of the Superior Court making a judgment, suddenly now you're willing to start making some changes to policies. However, I don't feel they're very accurate. That's what we asked for during the moratorium. Mr. Christopher voted for the moratorium. Three days later, he turned his back on us, basically flip-flopping. So I'm, I'm opposed to your changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Compton, right? Thank you. Okay, next up, that is last I have for on the sheet. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to provide public testimony? Please come forward, give us your name. And where you live, if you would.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Russ Hansen, Goldendale. And I'd just like to say, I'm neither opposed or in favor of the amendments to the CEPA. My concern is reading the RCW that it says that they shall be combined if there's a CEPA appeal and a CUP appeal, so it doesn't leave you much choice. And I don't like that. You guys probably don't like it that much either, but that's the way it is. I guess I'm here to ask, the way I read it, it says that it shall be combined into one hearing. That doesn't mean that one person will hear both appeals. Is it possible that you could have hearings examiner hears the CEPA environmental side of it, while the BOA is simultaneously hearing the CUP side of it? Because I'd rather keep the CUPs local with people that actually live here, know the community, know the people, than having someone else side. And I don't know if that's a possibility, whether that just convolutes things, but, you know, to me, I would rather see that than having someone outside. I'd just like to reference an email that I had with Commissioner Anderson back in September, on the 30th of September, I'd written you. And I, and I said that, I said that my concern was that the CUPs expressly concerned solar, that the BOCC would hire a hearings examiner, taking it out of local control, taking it out of your hands, taking it out of the BOA's hands, and it'd be going to someone outside. And I just, that was, and you had responded to me the next day, and in that you said, "So this is how I understand it works. A CEPA appeal comes to the county commissioners who are hearing it in a quasi-judicial manner." There's also, I believe, an RCW that Mochi found that requires a CEPA appeal and the cup to be held together. So if the commissioners push it to a CEPA appeal to a hearings examiner, which most counties do in this state, the hearings examiner could potentially hear both cases. That says potentially, doesn't mean that, that that would happen. And Mr. Anderson said in the next sentence, "I personally take issue with this, as I would prefer to have it left in the BOA's hands for the cup rather than a hearings examiner and have a hearings examiner hear the CEPA appeal." And so I kind of think maybe we're on the same page as that. And I don't know if it's a possibility, but I just wanted to express my concern on that. And if it possibly could go that way, then I prefer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to provide public comment or public testimony? Please come forward. Give us your name and where you live.
Delmar Eldred, Goldendale. You guys have created this problem yourselves. If you would have paid attention three, possibly four years ago, and looked at how the impact was gonna affect this county and upheld the moratoriums, you wouldn't be in the place you are now. And, but you guys have a, whatever it takes, you're gonna dance around to help these developers set in place these solar sites and without any idea what you're gonna do with the amount of waste that there's gonna be. Because it's already clogging up the landfills. There ain't gonna be no place for this stuff. And I don't know if you realize it or not, but you're talking 2,000 panels per acre. And you're talking thousands of acres. That's all gonna be solar waste within 20 years, probably. Maybe 25 at the outside, depending on the effects of the weather and storms and whatever else might happen. But anyway, it's just that you guys put yourself in a corner, and now you're trying to figure out how to get out of it. You could, you've had plenty of opportunity to deal with this and deal with it in the right way, and you avoided taking any responsibility for what the future of this county is gonna be faced with. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eldred. Okay, is there anybody else in the room who would like to provide public testimony? If not, I am going to go online to Ms. Arnold, who has been patiently waiting.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. It's funny you just assume I'm here to testify. I guess I could confuse everybody by saying I don't have anything to say, but Pat Arnold, Trout Lake, and I am here to testify, and I'm here to speak against the proposal. I want to start by saying I very much appreciate Mochi, her staff, and the work they do. I have found them very responsible to request for information and help over the years. I really do appreciate that. The document that I was able, that I received from the planning department doesn't show changes. So I can't really tell what's being changed in the text, and that's kind of a problem. The flow chart is helpful. I would like to know if the Section D2 that was quoted by a previous commenter here is new. I want you to understand, every time that I comment, and I frequently comment, I put time into this. I put time and work, and I kind of feel like maybe that isn't appreciated or understood. But it takes me time and effort to think about these things and to, to make comments. So I do agree that the trouble and expense of a legal challenge on, on, on a non-project action is a huge burden on those appealing. And it's also a burden on the county, and I also agree that it's not a very productive process. But I disagree with taking that opportunity away. I've heard multiple complaints over the years from the BOCC, and not just you guys. I mean, you know, before you, you were, you're in the hot seat now, but this has been going on for a while, but there are complaints about not being able to get anything done because of legal challenges. But really, you know, there's a way around that, that you guys could choose to manage these things in a different way and not make that ability or that opportunity to appeal so important, which it is currently very important. You know, you hold hearings, but, and you listen politely and all that, but I don't really see that you're actually listening. I've never seen any changes in, in ordinances or, or or negotiations or responses that lead me to think that the opinions that you're hearing and the facts, I mean, there's discussion over facts. Facts are not always facts, right? And I think that's apparent in the court decision that just came out about, under Canvas, where the whole discussion of Western Greyskull, for example, it, there are multiple different kinds of facts there. And we could talk for a long time about that one little piece of that decision. But in the Shoreline Master Program Advisory Committee, I mean, what I want to say to you guys is it's time to start welcoming and profiting from the diversity of opinion and point of view that you have in this county. The Shoreline Master Program Advisory Committee is a great example. I was thrilled that that committee was formed, but it didn't ever represent a diversity of points of view. And I made that clear at the beginning. I submitted multiple comments to the committee to ask that it be diversified. I'm sorry, I'm over time. I, I know you guys right now are taking a lot of heat, and I'm sorry for that. But for the general good, we need to try to work together. And you are the government. You have the means and the opportunity to facilitate actual conversations on these issues and make things like appeals less important. And I hope that you will put your efforts into doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Okay, next up, do we have anyone else on Zoom who would like to provide public testimony? 7211.
Greg Wagner with CESE. I oppose these changes. There's been limited information for the citizens. There's been no public meeting prior to this public hearing where the commissioners and Mochi Lindblad would discuss the need for these changes and just talk to the citizens. That's not transparent. You just put this up, and now you have a public hearing with people that don't really understand the whole context of this. There needed to be a meeting before this public hearing. I oppose it. I don't want to have the removal of 20.04.020, the billing of these million-dollar projects for county staff time. I want you to keep this local. Mr. Anderson, we've heard from you over and over about the CUP, and you did that because you wanted to keep the decision-making local. And now if you approve these changes, that will go to a hearing examiner and then possibly to the courts. So we want to keep it local. I'd like the BOA and the Planning Commission to be involved in these decisions, not a hearings examiner. I would have liked to seen the Planning Commission be involved in these decisions before this public hearing, but you excluded them. Those are nine citizens that are volunteers and want to help the county. You don't seem to want to bring in the citizens to help the county. You want to tell us what's going to happen. And a public hearing is not a town hall, Mr. Anderson. A town hall is where people talk to each other. And our commissioners now, sales, ever do that, have a conversation with us and brainstorm things and do what's right for the whole county. To put in all these solar panels across millions acres of farmland is, is just wrong. And Mr. Solder, you said you were born here, then you should really care about this county and not want to let that happen. If you guys pass these changes, all you're doing is passing the buck to a hearings examiner, and you're not willing to step up and do your job. And that's what your job is, to look out after the county and the citizens in it. And I'd like for you to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Okay, again, online, star six, unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on.
Yeah. Would you start? We just, I did a good enough. It's all right.
Thank you, Clerk of the Board, star six. Raise your hand, turn your video on if you would like to provide public testimony on this. I'm not seeing anyone. Anyone in the room? We will go back to the room. If anybody's had a change of mind, would you like to provide public testimony on this in any way? All right. I heard it much. I will open it to my seatmates if there's any clarification of any public statements or any questions of the staff.
I have one. My question is for Mr. Wagner. He says that in this document, it says that we won't be charging for companies for their full, responsible for all costs. And all I can find in this document is 20.16.020, Section Z or G, that said, says the applicant will be responsible for all costs incurred. So I'm curious where he quoted that he saw what he saw, and if he could point that out to me.
I'm unsure if he's still there. Okay.
Because if, if that is truly there, I would like to know where it is so I can have it removed, Mr. Wagner.
This is Greg Wagner with CESE. You can go to librarymunicode.com, and you go down to the Title 20 and look up the one that's in there, and it shows 20.04.020. And it again talks about building projects over a million dollars for county staff time and consultants, as it does in the zoning 5.16 in Title II and in Title 19. It says the same thing. Mochi Lindblad, I questioned her about that. She sent me emails, said she's removing that to make it consistent with, with other policies in the county. So I don't understand how something that's already in there, that's consistent with three other sections of the county codes and ordinances, by removing it, how does that make it consistent with the other policies? Thank you.
Director Lindblad, would you like to clarify?
Are, are we removing that?
Okay, so that reference is in, is codified in the county code, but it's not from an ordinance that was prepared by the planning department. When I look back at the reference ordinance in the code, it was done in 1995 as a result of the Building Code Amendment. So I pointed out to Mr. Wagner, because I know that is codified in the code. And as we all know, our county code online does not always consistent with the adopted ordinance that department use.
I don't know that.
To implement.
How are we supposed to know that?
Mr. Wagner, it's now your turn to talk, sir.
So that's something that we are working, we as the county is trying to make everything consistent. I removed a section in the county code because we already have that reference in Section 2 of the county code. And we also have a statement, as you pointed out, Mr. Christopher, that we are going to charge applicants. If their project right now is over a million dollars, they are required to have a reimbursement agreement in place, and we'll charge them. And one thing I also want to clarify is county planning department will not do standalone CEPA. It has to have an under- It has to have an underlying action tied to the C P A before we can process. And so we are not really removing anything. We are still have the right to charge applicants. For the staff time if that's warranted. And since we are going to update our fee ordinance, I just do not want to have this language in this proposal. To make that inconsistent with what's coming up next.
Right, and I I don't believe this board has ever said that they don't want to charge these large companies the full and fair. Rate, so I think that's this board just continuing on with that one. Let me see if I have any other questions related to. So Mr. McCune was talking about the the appeals fees, which are not part of this. That's something different for a different day and that this. Potentially goes to a hearings examiner, but that's also in R C W that says a C P A appeal comes before this board. Or hearings examiner, correct?
C P A appeal can only go before the county legislative authority, which in our county is the Board of County Commissioners. In the proposed amendments, I sent everybody a clean version of it because I did make a lot of changes to it. Not necessarily like a huge change to the procedural action, but rather we move around things to make it easier to read. We consolidate all the appeals under one section. I did not change the hearing process or permitting process. This entire amendment is not project specific. This is procedural change to the county C P A regulations. Everything that I put on here or on the flow chart to make it simple. Other than eliminating the non project action administrative appeal, everything is already in the code. But since they, you know, over the last couple of years, there's a lot of questions and concerns about how we get there. I'm just trying to make it clear to everyone. Because planning department implementing plenty different types of permit applications. Some of those are administrative, some of those require a public hearing. It could be before a planning commission, your Board of Adjustments or County Commissioners. Every case types have their own appeal process. But once you appeal the C P A determination, it kind of kick it to a different category. And that's something that we are obligated to follow. Those are state requirements. We are required to consolidate those process, the C P A appeal process with the underlying action. And it cannot be unlike before different hearing bodies. If you come before the county commissioners and if you choose and you have the right to and it's already in the code currently. That if you want to designate a hearing examiner to hear that, then we we have to follow. I did not make any changes in that regard.
So just just for me to clarify, when I read through all of these and I compared them. To what we currently have, the only thing that I see that it's an actual change is the removing appeals from all non project actions.
Correct.
Everything else in this entire packet is just clarifying the wordage, not changing anything. Clarifying the wordage so people can better understand the state R C W in our policy.
Yes, and then another rather significant change that you can say is the appeal period. Right now we have a fifteen day appeal period and we always count that from the day we publish that in the newspaper. But state law actually say we have to have a fourteen days minimum from the date of issuance. Because we only has a weekly local newspaper and we have a deadline to follow. We typically send that to the newspaper. Thursday or Friday the week before and they'll publish on Wednesday. So there's a lap there. So there's always a question, this is whether you count the fourteen or fifteen days from the day you sign the C P A determination. Or from the day for the actual publication, so everybody is aware of that. So I made that change from fifteen days to twenty one days. Just to make that clear that we follow the statute from the date of issuance. And it also provides, you know, enough time for the public to be aware of the proposal. So it didn't really change the appeal deadline usually ends on the Friday, two weeks later from the day of publication. But it just more be more consistent with how we do things and make it clear. So that's not ambiguity over there. It's not clear.
And abide with following state law.
Yes, that's the intent.
So that that brings up another question from Mr. Hanson who was questioning whether if if somebody appealed the C P A. On a C U P project, they would both be combined and it would go before us. Or a hearings examiner like every other county in the state does. He was questioning if it could be heard before two bodies, which it's my understanding that when you combine, that means you don't get two bodies. You get one body, it's either us or hearings examiner.
Right, it has to be before one hearing body. And it's only the legislative authority can hear C P A appeal. And you have the right to designate a hearing examiner. Therefore, you only leave the option if that's a C P A appeal. Related to a conditional use permit is either the county commissioners or a hearing examiner.
Okay, and I think I only have one more. Miss Miss Arnold questioned. On if twenty dot two eight dot oh two zero. Section D two is new and it's the part that says the county recognizes that each person has a fundamental. An inalienable right to healthful environment, et cetera. Am I correct that that was already in it? That's just moved here.
Right, so I did not rewrite the entire C P A ordinance. This is actually. Our original C P A ordinance is model after the state model ordinance that was available through Department of Ecology. So part of my job earlier to create this document for you is to compare. Our existing C P A ordinance to the model ordinance and make sure we have every aspect and elements incorporated in there. So that is part of the model C P A ordinance. I did not add anything.
So really, the just I guess to go back to clarify, the two changes in this whole thing. Removes the appeal from all non project actions and lengthens the appeal period. At accordance to state law.
Yes.
No further question. Removes the administrative. Okay, Mr. Solder.
First, I want to thank you, Mochi, for the work that you did on this. This. Is a cleaner. I know it doesn't seem like it, but I would concur with my seatmate that. My interpretation of the the really the only substantive change that we are talking about. Which is a is a big policy change and that is this body needs to debate that is the. With this draft is the elimination of the administrative appeal of a non project action. That the rest of this is the process is what we're already doing. It just makes it. It's supposed to be more clarified than what we have now with it scattered around. Based on the public testimony that I received, it doesn't seem like it was. It was received that way, that it was. And I will say I was I was disappointed that the testimony that I received. The vast majority of it had nothing to do really with the the item that is before us, which is this. Not, everybody wants to talk about projects and. Again, I'm trying to keep us focused on what we have before us, which is the change to the. The draft, potential change to the C P A appeal process. So I would agree, the only thing that's in here that is substantive and needs policy discussion. Is about the elimination of the administrative appeal for non project action. I would say to some of the comments, as far as a hearings examiner and keeping things local. I agree, I've always agreed as far as the. You know, we have been one of the last counties, we have we have used hearings examiners very sparingly. At least through my tenure and prior to that, that typically the Board of Commissioners hears the appeals. They do. The unfortunate thing is, as we have seen in the last, you know, especially the last couple of years. Is that these appeals are becoming much more sophisticated, much more. I mean, you almost have to be a land use attorney to understand the arguments and that is the. That's the concern about not using professionals to make these. Which are really relying on facts and not. The argument for hearings examiners is that it removes the politics of the decision. It is there, just like a judge is supposed to be, you know. They look at the facts, they make a determination based on the facts that are present, facts that are presented in in. In the case and they make, they look at what the code is and they apply those facts and yes, it is one person. And that is troubling to me, but unfortunately, the the. The sophistication of the appeals that are becoming before us. It's, you know, there's there's no, there's no legal requirements for county commissioners to be. To have training in land use planning. You know, we don't have, I don't, I don't believe any of the three of us have law degrees. And there are consequences for getting wrong, so I I understand that, but. I'll stop there.
I have one more, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Since we really only are talking, for the most part, removing administrative appeals from all non project actions. I was hoping you could give me and the audience a better idea of what non project actions are. So that we all know if this is something that really affects us or not.
There's a definition in the W A C actually, but generally speaking is for all. Non project actions that is not site specific, generally like. Code amendment, regulation change, like zoning ordinance change or comprehensive plan update. Those are what we call non project actions because you're really just changing the policies or or regulations. We're not talking about any site specific. Generally does not involve any kind of construction activities that would actually have a physical impact to the environment.
Well, I just want to be clear that we're we're talking about C P A challenges, not. Because sometimes there's confusion that when we're talking about a comp plan update. It's the would be the non project, it would be a C P A appeal of the not not of the comp plan update. That's not being eliminated or removed or changed or anything because I I don't want us to misunderstand that. This is in some way makes it so that if we were updating the comp plan.
Nobody.
There's no appeal to it other than to court. Absolutely not true.
Right, that's why I was trying to get a little clarification. So that's good. In good, good addition. Thank you. That's all I have, sir. Go ahead.
I think we need some clarification. Yeah, so so in essence, we're going to update the comp plan. And we may just, let's just figure we do the goals and policies and do not even touch zoning for right now. You are required to do a C P A analysis on that comp plan update, correct?
Correct.
And if somebody decides to challenge that C P A analysis on that comp plan update. Because you would likely come and say, we do not need to do a fully I S. We are only changing our goals and policies. Of something that was written seventy years ago and that's it. And you may, you may say it's a DNS. We we don't need to do a fully I S because it's non project specific. If someone appeals that decision, that decision plus the underlying comp plan would come to us.
Correct.
As 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 a consolidated appeal, okay?
Okay, so you you get to the complex nature of the C P A.
So you got made it difficult there.
No, no.
Because this is a non project action and so the for these particular instances, you do not require to consolidate. Although you can if you want to, but but for these particular examples that you just raised. You could choose to hear the C P A appeal first before take, you know, taking on to the planning commission recommendation. As to the amendment to the goals and policy of the comprehensive plan. So those are clearly spelled in the statute. But those non project actions is the only examples. They are not required to, you must consolidate or not consolidate. It's entirely up to the legislative board to make that decision. And we are just putting this here is because based on the thirteen years that I've been with the county. We've been trying multiple times to do non project action. End up, we always run into disagreements with others and then we spend a lot of. Resources to defend the county's decision and then end up, you know, we we have to repeal. The plan or regulations that we are working on. And so that was just a thought that, you know, it could be something that people still have the rights to appeal any decision the county made. We're just trying to consolidate all those because for like a non project action. It has to go before the planning commission for recommendation to the county commissioners. You are the authority to make the final decision to adopt or not. And then your decision can be is appealable to Superior Court. The proposal here, just in regard to the C P A portion of it. Is we just leave it until the final decision from the board for the underlying project, like complaint update, for example. And then take it all before the judge, if that's what that needs to be. That that's all, you know, it's nothing, I we do what we need to do and and we are not trying to hide or. Do anything that is not right because I'm here to follow the rules, follow the code. So that that's why we recommend that doing that and of course, you know, you can decide what you want to do. If you decide to continue to have an administrative appeal option for non project action. Then you will just follow under, you know, we require a public hearing before planning commission for recommendation. And if we have a C P A appeal, then we'll just take that C P A appeal and the planning commission recommendation before the board. Then you just have a consolidated hearing if you choose to to hear the C P A appeal and. The recommendation in a closed record hearing, meaning that there's no information can be provided to you at that time. You rely on the information that we have on file. Contrary to a C U P, for example. You could have an open record hearing because we have not had any open hearing for the entire process. It's all staff recommendation. Then either the board or the hearing examiner can take testimony. To, you know, review the proposal and make a decision on that.
It's incredibly complex.
Yes.
And and with your flow chart, remember, a lot of this came because of the direction from the board to you. For the public's benefit to understand if you do X. Y is the result versus if you wait and your real issue is with the actual underlying. Action, then you don't want to appeal X. You wait until it goes in front of the B O A. And then you can appeal that or comment on it and then appeal it or get a decision from that. And and the idea was is to create a nice, simple, easy flow chart for all of the different appeals because there's a lot of different ones through that go through different ways. And and I understand that we're only dealing with the C P A appeal here, but there's other appeals elsewhere. With regards to the non project actions that you spoke of, whether it's the code zoning. Or mending regulations, I mean, usually, for example, if we're doing a rezone of an area. We'll use Houston B Z as a prime example, since we spent so much money on it, we might as well talk about it. It went in front, it went from the community and it went in front of the planning commission. The planning commission deliberated on it. The planning commission put forward a recommendation. And that recommendation goes to the legislative authority, which is the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners held their own hearing on it, I believe, took more public comment. Revised it a little, I believe, again. And then from there, it was appealed, correct, through the administrative appeal process, correct?
It went to Superior Court.
I thought there was.
There was a C P A appeal on that as well and that's went before the hearing examiner. To hear the C P A appeal before the legislative action for the amendment.
Okay, okay, so 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 then, because there was a C P A and the C P A appeal was filed, so it didn't go straight to Superior Court. A hearings examiner heard that. so it didn't go straight to Superior Court. A hearings examiner heard that CIPA appeal. And so it was not consolidated because it's a non-project action, so it did not need to be consolidated. But that is the land use attorney.
Yes.
Right? And so heard that CIPA appeal, ruled on that. Okay. Now my question, and remember, we're going back years, when did the settlement agreement start out? Was that when it was appealed to Superior Court?
Yes.
Okay. And that was on the actual underlying non-project action? Was appealed to Superior Court? The CIPA was not appealed to Superior Court, correct? Or was it, or was it both?
I am sorry. I, I, I want to say both, but I honestly cannot remember. You had several.
Right. Many years, many years and many memories ago. So in this instance, though, where there was a CIPA appeal and the board at the time took that administrative CIPA appeal and they held it, sent it to a hearings examiner, the hearings examiner ruled. And then even after the hearings examiner ruled, it was still appealed to Superior Court. Okay. So if we were to remove this administrative appeal there, right? What would have happened? The difference would have been in that case, we would have not hired a hearings examiner, right? The board would have ruled on the underlying action and the CIPA appeal. And then it still would have been appealed to Superior Court for the underlying action and the CIPA appeal, correct?
Possibly. Because before you can file a judicial appeal, you have to exhaust all the administrative appeal available locally.
Right. And so what we in essence did is, is we added more time and cost to the county because that appeal went through and whoever appealed that was still unhappy with the decision and everything still got appealed to Superior Court, still got appeared, appealed to the Court of Appeals. Okay. Now, there's a lot of difference that I see in an action like this, especially when it comes to the non-project specific actions, because all of that is straight taxpayer money. Right? Whereas an appeal to a project-specific action, much of the dollars that are accordingly based on the reimbursement agreements are going to be, be, be paid by the actual applicants. Okay? And so, so I'm trying to, I'm, I'm looking at this from an honest perspective of, I want to get to the final answer and I want to save county resources, county time, county staff's time and county dollars. Because what we have is, is we have a very litigious society where if you don't get what you want, you're just going to appeal and it's going to cost everyone money. And, and my big thing, because the rest of it, we're not making large changes here. I mean, we're, we're honestly not. We're, we're talking about whether there is that administrative appeal for only the non-project specific actions, which are going to be zoning, which is going to come in front of us anyways. The goal is, is to have it heard. There's going to be a hearing by the planning commission. I guess the question was, the CIPA appeal, when it came in, was that before the hearing of the planning commission?
Planning commission is not a legislative body. They cannot hear CIPA appeal.
I know they can't. So, but, but so, so what happens is, is we come out and we meet for, for years and years and years and the community comes up with their plan. They hand it off to the county and then the county, you're going to do a CIPA analysis on it to make a CIPA determination, right? And once you make your determination at that time, is that before or after the hearings on the here, on the planning commission?
We are required to have like a CIPA determination together with the project before the hearing body, whether that's the planning commission or Board of Adjustment or county commissioners.
Or county commissioners. But that, but that, because we always, people get wrapped around the act. So everybody can be completely disagreeing with the zoning lines and where out on the map, right? But most people appeal the CIPA because they think that's when the appropriate time to appeal is. So you've already got an appeal before the planning commission has even started making changes to it. You see the problem that happens there? And so you're appealing the environmental impacts of something when you don't even know where all the lines are going to be yet. And to me, logically, it makes no sense the way we've been doing that. Because how do you know what the environmental impacts are going to be unless the planning commission has made their recommendations, made their changes on the map and done all that community thing that everybody here has been saying that we want. We want the community involved. We want whether the BOA or the, or the, the planning commission. And we want them to have the ability to make their recommendations and have it come before the Board of County Commissioners. And to me, that was, I want to ensure that the CIPA, on non-project actions, the CIPA appeal or determination cannot railroad the actual underlying non-project action. Does that make sense?
In a sense, we're rolling the public's voice.
In its sense, it completely stops the public's voice.
On that action. Yep.
Yeah. And I, I will say to that, that point, I'm only aware, I can only think of in my career here, two CIPA appeals that the board heard that were not challenged to court.
Snowden?
Meaning that that wasn't the end of it. I mean, that it was, it's, it's almost like it's inevitable that if some, I, I can think of two where the, there was one in, there was one in Wishram on a, it was a really small project. And it was, you know, and it was not professional, meaning there was, there was a dispute between two parties. The board acted in a quasi-judicial manner. They heard the stuff. The board deliberated. The board made a determination, yes, no. The parties didn't like it, but they were, they were like, oh, we had our day in court. We're done. That was it. Went on. Things went on. The project happened and it was good. That's the only one I have a, maybe only once, because I'm trying to think of the other is that. You know, but typically, yeah, is, it's, it's just another, it's just one more step in the, is that it's going, it's going to end up in court. So, I don't know. Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make a suggestion just because of the, the lateness of the hour and I see our room is getting full. Are you, I, I'm not prepared. I would like an opportunity to think about the, what I heard from folks and then also have a little more time to confer with counsel on this before I would be willing to render a vote on this. And so I don't know if, if we're not, if I'm in the minority, that's, that's fine as well.
No, that's, that's where I was earlier because I want to make sure counsel has a chance to look at this, to make sure we are what we think we are, and that's following state law. So I would, I would concur that I would prefer that this hearing be held over until.
1:30 on May 3rd.
Is it May 3rd? You see, you must be concurring because you're already there.
I will second that motion.
Okay. There's been a motion to, before, yeah, I'll do it in discussion. There's been a motion to continue this hearing to 1:30 on the 3rd of May in the Commissioners' meeting room. And we need to make sure it doesn't say courthouse on my list anymore.
It does say courthouse on there, doesn't it?
And discussion. First, I would, I would ask my seatmates.
Do we need to close the public hearing? Because I don't know.
You're continuing to interrupt. I was going to ask my seatmates, would you feel that we should leave this open? Or would you like it closed to further public comment written? And I will give my personal opinion. There's still quite a few things that need worked out here. And for example, the flow chart, thank you very much, Mochi. I think you've done a wonderful job with the flow chart and all of that. I think for the non-project specific actions, we, it would be good to see that flow chart as well if we could incorporate that and include that in there so that it's, it's one of those few times where they don't have to be consolidated.
So you, I just want to get some clarification. Do you want me to consider that we will have an administrative?
The only thing you have to do that is if you change the appeal. You don't need the flow chart because you won't be combining appeals for non-project actions.
No, I think he, well, he's, I, you explain what you mean.
In a, in essence, so the flow chart that you came up with is great and it's, it's perfect for project-specific actions. For non-project specific actions, if we could have a flow chart that clearly delineates, if you do, if, if you choose to do this, this is, this may go this way, this may go this way. Same type of thing for the non-project specific actions. Whether in, in have it for, and I'm, I'm doing this for the public. So if we, if we make the change, this is what the flow chart looks like. If we don't make the change, this is what the flow chart looks like. This is for the public to disseminate. So that would be the one, the one major thing that I would ask for. And I would also ask that, based on what I have heard from the people that commented, I would personally feel I would like to leave this open to further public testimony as well as on Mon, next Tuesday, when the flow chart is available, continue to allow more public testimony because this did not go through the planning commission. It's been advertised, but still there may be more people. And I don't mind ever hearing from the public.
So leave it open to written and verbal testimony?
Yes, for the second.
I would agree.
Because I never got to the question, part five, if there's further public comment because we are still just been in deliberation this entire time.
Okay.
Or clarification stage.
I apologize. I just want to make sure. So this flow chart is okay. You just want to have a alternative flow chart to say if we are going to allow for administrative appeal for non-project action, what would happen?
That one. And then also if we have no administrative appeal for non-project action so that we can let the, let everyone see it, this is what it'll look like. We can talk more on the side for more further clarification.
Yes.
The only thing I have left for discussion is, this was, to, to let everybody know, this was not the planning department that took this upon themselves to change the world and screw you. This was a determination by the board months ago, talked about in many open public Tuesday meetings, that we wanted our planning director to go forward and clarify these rules so people could better understand them, make sure we were following RCW and create a flow chart. And it was all in the meeting of better understanding for the public and transparency. So I want to thank her for that and, and any staff she may have used for that. No further discussion, ready to vote. So we have staff over here.
That sounds even better because we have more time then.
Does that throw, I would ask. I don't know if that potentially throws a wrench in anything, but I'm fine with it.
Okay. So I will repeat the motion as I now understand it. And that is to continue the public meeting to 1:30 PM on May 10th, here in the Commissioner's chambers. And the record will be left open for public comment or public testimony written as well as we will be taking oral testimony at that meeting as well. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. And Mochi, thank you very much. And now we are, yep, a little bit behind schedule.
Yeah, we might need to make a little more time for that one.
I think so. Okay. Safe Space Children's Advisory Center of the Gorge, Executive Director Beatrice Lynch and Development Director, Volunteer Coordinator Kelly Brown, an update on the services provided to Clickatuck County.
I'm sorry, we're running late.
That's okay.
And if I messed up your name, I'm sorry as well.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here. I'm here to talk about the Children's Advocacy Center. It's located in Hood River. We've had a small contract with Clickatuck County for, now since 2016. What a child advocacy center is that we are the one-stop shop for child abuse investigations where law enforcement and DCYF in your, in your state, which is Child Protective Services, would refer a child that is either, has disclosed some abuse or someone is concerned that they're being abused. They come to the center where we have a forensic interviewer that is able to talk to the child. The, the forensic interviewers have specialized training that are able to talk to children to elicit the story directly from the child, using their own words to tell about what is happening to them. We are a medical model, which also means that we have a doctor that is available for, to do examinations on children. Not all children that come through the center need a medical exam, but we'd like to have that available for that purpose. Some of the, the abuse that is alleged is time-sensitive. So we have the doctors that are able to do rape kits, for a better word, on children. And they're not, they're done at our center, which is a very small clinic. It's away from, you know, big areas or like away from the ER type of situation. When kids come in, they're in crisis, something horrible's happened to them. Sometimes their parents are in crisis as well because sometimes it's the first time they've heard something has happened to their child. Our team is able to do kind of a wraparound. We have law enforcement that comes in and is able to be there to observe the interview. They're not in the interview room itself, can watch it remotely because they have questions. Law enforcement is there to make sure that the bad guy gets arrested or charges need to be brought, whatever. So they have lots of questions. During that interview with the child, the child, those questions are, are asked and that information is, is available to the officer. CPS, Child Protective Services, is also there as well because they also have another job. They need to make sure that the child is safe, that there is a protective person that's going to make sure that the child continues to be safe. So they also need information. So all of that information is able to be gathered at one time. It's recorded, the interview is recorded so that you can go back to it as well. And then for prosecution, that's available to the prosecutor if a case goes to trial or is, goes through the legal system. So we have that team available there. We also have an advocate that sits with the family. Because as you can understand, there's a lot of information that is being gathered and given to the families at that time. So not always able to observe or absorb the information that's given to them. So our advocate will sit with the family, will provide resources. Will sometimes do follow-up, you know, calls to make sure that things are, you know, to, to understand what's going on with the family. Doctors will make recommendations for further medical services that they may need or prescriptions that they may need to be filled. So again, that follow-up is there for that, for that family. The, the piece that we are working very hard to fill, and I think this is a need that is across the board and probably across the nation, is a mental health piece of it. We are working very hard to have that, that services be available. We do have a small contract with a private therapist in Hood River that sees children. Because that's the other issue is that you may find a therapist, but they don't always want to see children, especially under the age of 10, for whatever reason. 10 seems to be the magic number. So we are working very hard to figure that out in, in bringing in that, that missing piece to our, our full assessment of a, of a family. Clickatuck County has had a contract with us since 2016. They are able to send some children. And I understand that in this past year, this board also allocated some other fundings to provide more services to more children from Clickatuck County. The CAC model, the Children's Advocacy Model, is not new. There's over 20 in the state of, in the state of Washington, excuse me. So many communities and many counties use a children's advocacy for their child abuse investigations. It is a wonderful tool that investigators have when they're investigating child abuse because they have us, a child advocacy center that is not part of law enforcement, not part of DHS or DCYF. Not, we are an independent clinic that provides this. So when the detective leaves there with a report and a DVD with the child's, you know, not confession, story on, on the, what happened to them, it's just a wonderful piece of investigative tools that they have in order to move forward with their investigation. The same thing goes for CPS workers. When they have to make these decisions for children, this is a wonderful tool that they have. So it's well. So it's well-used. Children's advocacy centers are known across the country, in your state, in my state, in Oregon. And we are very fortunate to have this resources in our area. And the Gorge is kind of unique. We all have kind of pockets of, of communities. We're all very small. I don't know that one community can support a center like this. But together, as we've done, is we kind of pooled our resources to be able to have this, this high-quality center to provide services to children in the most vulnerable times of their lives. So it's, so it's, I, I'm here to talk about that, and I'm also going to kind of bring you up to date. We've been doing some work in our center the last year. We've started a capital campaign to start, to have a permanent home for our, our center. In that process, we have discovered, again, like I talked about, is the need for mental health. It's nonexistent. And I can talk a little bit about programs, no, what is the comprehensive mental health in, in Clickatack County that is not providing the services to children. I know that because the, the caseworkers are struggling with that. I can tell you the same thing is happening on the, on the Oregon side. So in our process to finding a permanent home and expanding the services that, that we are providing for child abuse victims, we are also looking at that piece of it and how we're going to attract a higher mental health providers that can work specifically with children and families. And that will only benefit the families that we see. We are not making a difference between families from Clickatack or families from Oregon. When they come through the door, they're just families that we serve. And we would love to be able to have those resources for those families that we serve. I think that's kind of the big, the overall picture of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a quickie clarification question. Did I hear you correctly that you said comprehensive mental health also doesn't work with children, say, under ten?
I'm, I'm not sure about that. I know that they're very understaffed.
Okay.
Right now. So they don't have. No, they're supposed to serve everybody, but I, right now, the, the reason that they're, they're not serving is because they're very understaffed.
Or will it water of that one?
Yes.
So, okay. Yeah, you had me a little worried there. I might have to do a little follow-up.
Commissioner Sutter, do you have any questions?
I still was questioning.
How many children come through the center a month?
I'll have to break it down, but last year we saw a hundred and thirty-three children.
For the year?
For the year. We average about three to, two to three a week. And fortunately, they seem to come in clusters. We may have like a week that we only see one child, and then the following week we're going to get slammed.
And of those hundred and three children, how many were able to see the mental health therapist?
I'm sure that, I don't have that number directly, but I, I'm sure we did a lot of referrals. But a very small number of children actually got to see a, a therapist. I would say under twenty.
Wow.
And how many do you feel of those hundred and thirty-three probably should?
Hundred and thirty-three.
Pretty close, yeah.
Yeah.
If not them, then their families. You know, it, when, when child abuse is, is, comes out and it's out in the open, it affects the entire family. So it's, we're not just talking about the child that has crisis needs and things like that, but we're talking about the whole family that needs, needs some counseling after something like this.
Yes.
Can you talk, you know, with COVID and the schools being shut down, I know there was, there was, we all had great concerns about abuse, mental health, you know, for children. Are we seeing that yet? Is it too early to see that kind of, the wave of that coming? Do we expect, are we, are you, as you said, we're already struggling as far as with mental health services for these? You know, are we ready, as far as is the industry ready to be able to handle that as this? Because I know things are just kind of getting back up and running as far as referrals, as far as coming from the schools, as far as, because there's some of these kids that they have not seen for two years that just showed up, you know, a month ago. And so I'm, I'm kind of curious, can you make me feel better about that, or should I be, it sounds like no, okay?
No, we are, we are not ready. We don't have the, the, the mental health providers to, to meet the need, obviously. I can talk about the type of cases that we have seen. Well, let me talk first about when, when COVID first hit and everything got shut down. Our case dropped seventy percent. We didn't have a single kid come through, I think, the month of April that first year. They slowly started picking back up. We are back up to where, you know, kind of normal numbers, I guess you should say, you could say. This year, I think we're, we're running a little high. But the types of cases that we're seeing, our sex abuse cases went through the roof. And a lot of it was kid on kid, which makes sense, because you had a lot of kids unsupervised with a lot of time on their hands. Parents are working and they're not making great choices. So we did see quite a bit of that, that. I can also talk about, in the metro areas with my other colleagues, the severity of cases increased. So before you would get a call from the school because a child had a bruise and teacher saw it, was concerned, made the call. During the pandemic, when kids were at home, the, the calls came from the ER with broken bones, because they weren't being caught at that level of just a slap or, you know, a head. So the severity has increased. And you're right, I don't think we've seen probably the full aspect of, of what is out there. Part of our other expansion of services is that we are looking at it outreach intervention piece of it. We're wanting to provide some curriculum to the schools for both parents and children. It's staff. We are working with the ESD across the river in Oregon, and they've been doing some surveys of the school of their needs. And what they're finding that in the middle school and the high school, sexual verbal harassment is huge this year as kids came back to school. We could talk all day about the reasonings of that, but it's just there and schools are just really having a hard time figuring out how we're going to deal with this, this type of behavior. So that's something that we are also looking at and figuring out, what can we do to support and help with that part of it? I want to talk a little bit about the cost. So we did a, a cost analysis, my numbers are a little old, in 2008, of what a full assessment in our center cost. And it cost $2,493, so just under $2,500 to have the forensic interview, to have the medical exam, to have the advocacy services of all that. So all of those pieces, when children come through a center, it's just under $2,500.
Per child, per visit?
Per child. But you know that if a child ends up at the ER, they're not leaving there under $5,000. And the, the difference of having an exam done at the ER is huge, because for, for one, the ER doctors don't want to do, especially sex abuse exams on small children, they don't want to do those. They don't feel like they have the training to do that, they just don't want to do that. So that's one issue. The second issue is that they don't have the equipment to, to document any injury or any, any finding on the, on the child. We have specialized cameras in our exam rooms to take photos that filters out light, that doctors can look at a bruise and say, okay, this is about, you know, five days old. Or I'll tell you the story about when we first got this special camera. We had a little girl with just a circular bruise on her side, couldn't figure out how she would get that. We took the picture, filtered it out, and sure enough, there's teeth marks on it. So those are the, the, the types of equipment and the type of training that our doctors have that can actually go into further and, and ask those questions about a child, to see what happened to them. So if a child ends up at the ER, it's going to be, the doctor will come in, want to know what happened, the nurse will come in, and all very nice, meaning people. I mean, they're caring people. But every time you ask the child to talk about what happened, it's re-traumatizing. So they come into our center, it's, it looks very, you know, homey, very nice atmosphere, that nobody else is going to be there. It's just that family, our team is there to support that family. So the cost of it is, is pretty reasonable, I believe. And then I can also talk about the cost to the community. So in Hood River County, when we first opened up in 2009, the district attorney will tell you that she was going to trial for child abuse cases three to five times a year. And these are multiple-day trials. At the time, it was costing about $10,000, $10,000 a day to, to put on a trial. I don't know what the cost is, I'm sure it's more than that now. So since we opened up in 2012 in Hood River County, we've had five child abuse cases. So that's a huge savings to the community. Because it's really powerful when a defense attorney can show his client the child's story, you know, show the video of the child telling what happened in their own story. So what happens is that they will plead out, instead of taking the, taking their case to trial, putting the child in that position of having to testify in front of them. So it just, so much cost. Yeah. The, the monetary savings is huge, but also the, the savings, emotional savings to the child is huge. I'm a big believer in CACs, and I, I do believe that this is the best place to handle this type of case. And I'm very excited that your community feels the same way. And I think by supporting Safe Space, we are creating the best possible scenario for children that each of our individual counties or communities can't do on, on their own, so we have to pool our resources together. The closest CAC to this area is either Vancouver or Yakima. So.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I would be, I guess, a comment to my seatmates that if you have the opportunity, I have toured the facility last fall, or last summer, last fall, sometime last year, sometime. Because I was really curious about what, it was actually when the prosecuting attorney was in here advocating for that. I wanted, and I had been invited before, and it seemed like a good, a good time to actually go see what, you know, what we, what we were paying for. And I was so impressed with the facility, as you said, with these, these kids, that's the, the environment that's created. It's very professional, but it's, it's very kid-safe, as far as like, these, these are traumatized kids that, I mean, my kids were always traumatized when we went to the ER anyway, just for, much less something like that. And so if you have the opportunity, I'm sure they, I would really say, take, take an hour if you haven't ever been there.
They'd have to put me on the couch.
Oh, well, they could probably do that, but, and go see it. It's, or at least drive by it, look through the window, although that might be a little sketchy, so don't do that. Yeah, never mind. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
I would just say thank you for doing what you're doing.
I, yeah, and I want to thank you guys for, for your support and the support of children ultimately. I mean, I think what we do is, I believe in it wholeheartedly, because I see the difference that it makes. And it's wonderful that a community sees it as well and supports this place for children, so, thank you.
So I guess my question would be, is if you see two to three children a week, are you all full-time? Or do you come in as an, at as needed basis when there is an issue? How does, how does the, the organization operate?
So we have, I think I'm the only one that works forty hours a week. Everybody else has, works different schedules. But yes, so our medical provider is there one day a week. But we also have two other medical providers that help us out. So we are available seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And I have been at the center in the middle of the night, because that's when we need to be there. We have staff that ranges from twenty to forty hours a week, and depending. And then we also have staff that is on call as needed. So we have made it work. I can't tell you, just with duct tape sometimes, we have made it work to, so that we're there and, and are available to kids. As a small agency in a rural community, and we're always figuring out how we're going to pay, you know, next, for next month's services, we just make it work, so.
All right, thank you so much for everything you do and for giving us an update. And if you figure out how to handle the mental health side of it, please let us know, because we're all here.
Well, I, you know, I may be back at this board if we figure out how to, how to pay for this, because it, it's a huge need. And I would love to be able to, to offer that services, not just as in crisis, but as an ongoing for, for therapy for children and families. And if, again, like I said, if we pool our resources together, we may be able to, to figure it out.
I know we looked at our budget last year with the thought of trying to come up with more. Couldn't find it, but every year I'll be looking.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up, I apologize, we're running a little behind schedule. Andre Fielding for the Washington State Parks and Rec Commission, update and overview of the state parks' proposed purchase of a 112-acre parcel within Clickatack County. Well, you didn't really look like an, I guess you could have been an Andre.
I've been called worse.
I was today, so.
Both of the times.
Welcome to my world.
All right, let's pull this. You don't tell us about this parcel you guys are looking about?
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm guessing that you received a letter from State Parks, which is a recent law that when we, when the state agency buys property within your county, I think specifically through the Recreation and Conservation Office, that you get a notification of that. And so this one's a little bit different, is it's, it's not a new acquisition. State Parks has been working on this for several years. The owner of the property in Swale Canyon wanted to sell his property to the state. And he was getting older, he moved off the property down to Lyle. And we started to work on the process, process to purchase the property. During that process, he passed away. We continued with his heirs until it turned out there was something with the title, with his ex-wife on there. So this has taken several years now to move through this process. And so what, what has happened is it's re-triggered our need to go back to the RCO for that funding to be renewed, which triggered another notification to you about the acquisition. And so they're, they're anticipating it's going to roll over past this year, which is when they'll have to go into a new budgeting cycle. And, and that's why you received the letter. The acreage is on Swale Creek. And the property is 112 acres on both sides of the trail. It did have a residence on there.
You got the correct one, right?
Yeah, that is the correct one, yes, yeah. So 112 acres, both sides of the creek, and as the drainage comes through there, there's a lot of outbuildings, temporary structures, trailers, vehicles, and the, the stuff on there, which has also complicated the acquisition, because there's significant cleanup of the property as well, before it comes into state ownership. But it's, it's part of the trail and, and.
That right there is me, by the way.
So you're, yeah, you're a close neighbor there. And it's, also, this is happening at the same time we had another planning project running on where we were doing some long-range planning for the Swale Canyon. So you may also have heard a little bit about that as well.
Now, do you have, are you trying to buy up the rest of these properties on the trail, or just this one?
No, we, we are currently looking how we can work with neighbors. So along Swale Canyon over the years, we've got a lot of people come to us who've talked about either they like their parcel to be part of the park, or they'd like to work on conservation with the park in some collaborative way. So that's when we did our planning boundary to say, what areas do we want to work with? And we basically said the top of the ridge was as far out as we want to work. That could be conservation easements, it could be acquisition of properties in some cases. It could be simply us working with the neighbor on a joint conservation project, which could be planting oak trees or other stuff. Swale Canyon has a tremendous amount of fish restoration projects going on with the Yakima Nation. So currently, we are partnering with them to see how we can work together on projects. And the Christians and property there that's for sale is one of those areas that we'd like to work together on restoring and planting some different vegetation along the corner of the creek there.
Looking at the pictures you provided, is your guys' plan to do a cleanup in there?
Yes, yeah, that would, would be cleaned up. I think there's maybe one building that might make a nice picnic location that we'd leave up. It was a, like an old stone and wood building, but apart from that, I think we can clear everything. There was a, like an old stone and wood building, but apart from that, I think we'll clear everything out of there. It's mostly temporary stuff.
Tempy perm. Oh, it's been there long enough, it's considered.
Temporary permanent.
Okay, so I guess my question, unless you have anything.
Just, uh, do State Parks pay pilt?
No, I don't believe we do.
What was the question?
Pilt.
So I'm, uh, I understand, um, the need, desire and want to clean up these properties. We have many of them all throughout the county and we'd like most of them cleaned up. My question is, is to the, what is the decision to do an ownership or rather says just a conservation easement? Or a conservation easement, uh, with access to some of the, the stream bed for the stream restorations? Knowing that this is going to be coming off the tax rolls, um, do you have a long range plan for this property for park purposes? Or are you just going to purchase it and hold it? Um, another question I have is going to be on, is there any active cattle range or management of any other resources on the property? That it will be affected by State Parks purchase?
So our purchase is, basically a request from the landowner to ask that we were interested. So we were interested for the conservation value. So we will hold it as a conservation property that has parts that are useful for restoration. And the parts that we'll just retain. For long-term planning, um, we are currently working on what. That would be for the whole canyon and what we're sort of thinking about. We don't have any set goals on that at the moment. But what we did have was a lot of people who are neighbors coming to us, asking us, we've got this property. Uh, we're interested in working with State Parks and so by defining the long-term boundary along the rim of that. That allows us now to start those conversations with different people like the Conservation District, Yakima Nation, Columbia Land Trust. Neighbors who come to us and, and ask us questions, whereas before just the trail was our focus. And so now we're trying to broaden, but we don't have all the, the vision and answers at this point. And that's what we're, will be our next phase here overall for Swale Canyon and the trail.
So I guess the question would be is if you don't yet have the vision and you yet don't yet have the answers. Why are you moving forward with a project that may not be part of your strategic vision for what you want to do?
We do, we do have the vision for conservation and fisheries restoration part of it. And that this property would be part of that. It contains important oak, um, Doug fir habitat, which is, um. Being reduced, uh, this is one of the three areas in the state that has western gray squirrel. Um, this remnant populations from many years ago, uh, and so that's an important thing to protect. And then also the water quality by having those slopes intact with vegetation on improves the fisheries habitats. We are, we are meeting those goals, yes. And we do, we do have that goal currently.
So then are you, do you know, are there any current cattle grazing that occurs on this property?
No, not on this property, no.
Okay, uh, questions from my other, any other questions from my seatmates?
I don't, I have tax information out if you want to look at it. Is this what Dave's doing over there too? We're looking at the tax information. If we, if we make this decision, we have to understand how many people we may be impacting and what they, we may be impacting. So, so you have to look at the junior, that's what I'm looking at, is the junior taxing districts. And, and what it's gonna cost the cemetery district, two dollars and seventy-eight cents a month per year. Uh, and then up, uh, up the ladder to see. So, yeah, no, interesting.
So are you positive that State Parks does not pay pilt?
I'm almost positive, yes, yeah.
That may be another discussion.
We do pay some assessed value to fire departments based on square footage of buildings and stuff like that. But it's, um.
Interesting.
Not, we don't pay the other complete taxes that you would see on that property when you look on the assesses site.
Well, just for the record, pilt is not the same as the property tax.
Okay.
It's, it's generally significantly less. It's.
Ah, okay.
It's a.
And for those that don't know what pilt is, it's payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of some taxes, I should say, in practice, but yes, it is, so.
My seatmates, I don't know how you feel about this purchase. Um, would anybody like to make a motion? Would you like to?
Do, do we have an action before us?
I think we can sign a letter of support. We could make a letter of support. We could make a letter that we don't support it. There's lots of actions we could choose to do.
Is he asking for any actions?
I am not asking for any.
You're just, you're just giving us an update.
This was an update.
I think the letter came to you and then the request went back to State Park. Can you come tell us about it? And that's, uh, how I ended up here today.
So you don't necessarily need anything from us. You're moving forward in your plan.
No, but we, we would like to communicate our projects and stuff that we're working on in the county to you. And, and we, we feel that, that, that back and forth conversation is good for both.
It is, and it keeps us informed on what's going on too, so, yeah.
That and when it goes in front of the, the committee to rank, when you say, yeah, I sat down with the county commissioners, that goes a long way.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you very much, sir, for your time, um, and answering all of our questions.
Okay, thank you.
See you tomorrow. And, uh, sorry, Andre, next time it'll be Andrew.
Yeah.
Okay, we are going to skip ahead, uh, just because we have some people who've been very patient, uh, a half an hour late. Veterans Advisory Board update. Come forward one, come forward all, whoever would like to.
Say there's a chair we can slide her up.
We've got a couple chairs and there's the chairs in the back that can come up.
Slide anything you want.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, I guess I'm the stucky, cause I got like voted as a vice chairman last year and now I'm the chairman.
Designated speaker.
Yeah, well, I guess it goes with the position. So we had a meeting last Wednesday. Uh, and since then, uh, we received a resignation or a, I don't know if I wanna call it resignation, that's what, that's what he used. But Mr. Smith from District One.
Oh.
Is no longer a member of the Veterans Advisory Board. So we are asking that we're gonna need some help filling that position.
I found it for you. I have a recommendation for you anyway.
From District One?
I was talking to Ms. Erin Quinn, our health, uh, director. And her nine point, nine years, eleven months and fourteen days of service, or whatever she was telling me today. Uh, and she was very interested in that and I told her the position didn't come open for another year and a half. And here you are.
Right.
So there's an idea for you.
She's from District One?
He's in White Salmon.
Okay, uh, then we can reach out to her. I'm not sure exactly how that processes. I know that when I, I sent a letter to the, the board and then, you know, I was called up, so I, I just let her know that. Okay.
Yep, so that's, that's how we did it with you. So they usually turn in an application that they're interested.
Right.
Get everybody sign off, so, yeah.
That, that, that did come up, uh, since our meeting last week, so I just wanted to get that out there. Um, for, um, assistance, just, just for kind of note, uh, this is just for Golden Dollar. Yeah, for, for this side of the county, in twenty twenty-one, we did, we had zero requests for any funding for indigent from the county. Uh, and then in twenty twenty-two, this year, we've had a request for some assistance with rent. Um, that's gonna, we've had some fuel requests, but the legions here have been taking that out of their fund and not necessarily going through the county. Indigent fund to do that. So we're gonna be looking to that to see if, if we start seeing more of a need or request for that. We, they may need some assistance from the, the legions to do that, so. Um, Mr. Caldwell, he would have probably more information on the other side of the county, on that kind of information.
Uh, on the western side of the county, District One, uh, we've only had one interaction, I'd call it. An individual who asked for assistance in repairing his vehicle. Spent a bit of calcium treatment and supplying the necessary information before we helped him and we're still working through that process. Other than that, it's about all we've seen this past year, which is, uh, tracking similar to previous year. With COVID, that, that twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, seems to, uh, we don't have as many encounters with folks. We think because of probably the federal and state safety nets are associated with this whole COVID thing. So my only guess.
Did you see any when, uh, twenty twenty hit? Was, was there much that came through?
We saw nothing on the west side.
Okay. Several in twenty, cause that was what I, my figured, you know, when, when everything shut down, that's when you would see the most amount of requests.
I saw five or six in twenty twenty.
Before this Fed and the states start issuing checks.
Money started rolling out and all the assistance in twenty twenty-one was a complete drop off.
Interesting.
Between rent forgiveness and stimulus checks, we think that probably has something to do with it, quite honestly, so.
See, I'm not a big fan of all the stimulus checks, but I'm glad to know that it actually made a dent somewhere.
It appears that way. We, we don't have all the.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Timmy here has some other information on a new organization that, uh, gonna be benefiting the town.
Yeah, it is, um, they actually took over for Blue Mountain, which has other counties. But they've taken over our county and they're funded, uh, through a grant through the VA. And got some motivated individuals. Um, they actually work with homeless. Their, their goal is homeless vets. Uh, and indigent vets, they, um. They're out of Yakima. You got some, uh, talked to the individual for about half an hour yesterday. Really motivated, just getting on board. Really motivated to work with homeless vets. They have units in Yakima that, like fifty units to work with. Uh, homeless vets and their families. Their requir- only, the requirements are they had to be an active duty veteran. Or a reserve or, or guardsman that was called up for, during that period, you know. So, and they would qualify. Uh, they have case managers, um, that work with veterans, job employment. They have, uh, the case manager will work with the veteran if they're in need of, uh, if the veteran need, wants to help as far as drugs. And alcoholism, uh, but it's on the vet that wants to do that. They also help with, uh, uh, moving expenses or supplying, uh, stuff that need for apartments. They definitely assist in housing. So, uh, if a homeless vet is gonna get kicked out or something, they'll work with the landlord. And they got a program that paid, help pay for that housing and work with the landlords. And, uh, and even set up contracts with the landlords to help with keeping these vets in, for being homeless, for being kicked out. But, um. They're all those, they're also, um, they're definitely motivated. I mean, they're just, they're new. They, they took over for like, for this other organization and they're definitely motivated. They've gone around the different counties. I know it's not just our own county. They also serve some other counties, but they're really motivated to, uh, help homeless vets and. Job placements and so, uh, they're trying to get the word out there. Uh, we haven't seen much of homeless vets here, but, uh, I know down in Yakima, I guess they've had some down there. But, uh, definitely motivated and it, uh, we have, if they have the opportunity, they'd love to meet with you and give a brief for themselves, so.
Can you tell me the name, did you say Blue Mountain?
They took over for Blue Mountain, but they're actually called OIS of Washington. It's called the Service, Supportive Service Veterans Family.
Veteran.
Another interesting part that we.
Does our, does the VSO have this information?
They, they did give that information to Bill Smith, yes, to get that out. So, yes, that's good for us as far as the legion here, you know, uh, if we run into indigents, we've got some information to help them be. You know, a place to go. We can't help them because we're, we have, we have our limitations.
Absolutely.
So.
And, uh, I just wanted to mention, I need to bring it, we were talking in the hallways, it's not necessarily a honorable discharge vet. It could be if they have a lesser discharge, uh, maybe, uh, cause some of the other programs out there are just, you know, honorable or, and that's it.
That's what we can, all, all we can help is an honorable, but as far as indigent vets. But yes, they said they can do, um, other, a general or, or other than, other than honorable, so.
Not dishonorable, but the ones in the middle.
Right.
They kind of get lost. And that's a, that's a good thing.
Yes.
I'm one of the ones that got lost.
Oh, yeah, so we were presented with this bro served during our meeting last week and then he did the homework.
A general.
So, trying to get.
But they're definitely motivated. They got some good support staff and, uh, I guess it's really out there to try and help somebody, so.
Good things.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I would also, uh, Mr. Smith, thank you for all of your time. That you have done volunteering for both the Veterans Advisory Board, as well as all of the other boards. Um, you've spent decades of your life giving back to the communities in Clickatack County. So from me and the rest of my board up here, thank you for everything you have done.
Absolutely. Anytime anybody speaks of your name here, it's a good thing, so, um, yeah, great job. You're gonna be hard to replace and you can't leave until you do find your replacement, so.
Yeah.
That's all we have unless the board has any other questions for us.
No other questions. Thank you all.
Keep going.
And thank you for being so patient.
You want agenda?
Let's do the consent.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with eleven items.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with all eleven items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, forty thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents. For the date ending April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Need that change order next to, yeah.
Change order.
I have it.
I get it. You got it?
It's on the blue card.
I know.
Go ahead, blue card.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the change order to Avidex for the purchase of installing two additional wireless microphones. In the first floor conference room, the change order amount is four thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and zero cents. Which includes shipping and handling.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the change order to Avidex. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Susan ran long.
Yeah.
No Greg, so does that mean I get a two-minute recess?
Um. Yeah.
Why do we wait for him to show up?
Is, is, uh, the treasurer here in the? Nope. Oh. Yeah, you can do your stretch. We will be, uh, we will be in recess for the next three minutes.
We always wanted to rest after first.
We now since I've been sixty-seven.
You like our new, our new digs?
I'm assuming.
All right, okay, unfinished business. Does anybody have anything for the agenda? Nope. Okay, how about board pending?
There was a change order. Could we do one more change order?
Absolutely.
The second change order. So.
Okay, where's, where's the other?
I'm looking to see if I see it here. I'm trying to understand it, I guess I would say. Okay, I can go. Are we ready? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve. I'm looking for a change order number. Okay, so approve this change order to Avidex. The original contract was for eighty thousand, five hundred. The following change orders approved on twenty twenty or September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. I'm not seeing.
Four thousand sixty.
With no numbers or nothing on it, okay. So my motion would be to approve the change order for that contract number given above for four thousand, sixty-five dollars and zero cents, which includes tax.
I'll second the motion. There's been a motion and a second to approve the change order to Avidex for four thousand, sixty-five dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You bet. Okay, anything else under board pending? On my seat next. What was on my list? Well, that's why I have to write it all down.
Yeah, and the cold coffees and that's stirring my memory.
I think, I think I hit all my stuff earlier. Okay. Moving on, Treasurer Gallagher, Office and Finance Committee update.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'm here to update you from the Friday Finance Committee meeting on four twenty-two. The discussions were around, the first one was, and I'm not going to get this all correct, but the ARPA funds. Jen had asked that we have Katrina on the line as she's getting ready to file. There's a report that's due, I believe, at the end of April. And Katrina gave us a overview. I believe that the rules changed from the night that we scheduled Katrina to come to the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday and she actually was there on Friday because I think that's still where we are with the rules of how to report on all of this stuff. So she did attend the meeting. Everything that we've been doing has seemed to be okay so far, so I think that's what we got to. The other piece that we did have a discussion about was the dollar, having the dollars allocated. So you have to report the use of the dollars as you're using the dollars and the idea was to use the dollars as quickly, not drag it out forever and ever, to do it sooner rather than later, whether, you know, in the reporting aspect of how that is. So Jen was going to, I think she had everything she needed to file the report. But again, the other thing that was brought up that I always find interesting is that we're going to get ready to file a report and I don't believe the rules were going to be finalized till sometime this month. Maybe it was just the other day or something, but we're always constantly in the rulemaking, so. That was something that happened with the ARPA dollars. We had a discussion. Katrina had good answers.
A clarification question you kind of lost me that I think I understand what you're trying to say is that they're saying don't hold off your expenditures for the ARPA dollar kind of thing to drag it out. So you guys, I'm guessing you mainly talked about just using the ARPA dollars as lost revenues.
That's exactly what we talked about.
In reserves, pulling it out for the financial software.
But not having, it would be.
Not labeled ARPA funds.
ARPA dollars would be used for lost revenues.
Right.
And use them for general purpose dollars.
Following along then.
And report it because potentially even in this situation, if we used it for the financial system, which I think all things would be whatever, you would probably be into twenty twenty-three potentially by the time that all gets done.
The reporter get the paperwork behind this.
Getting it done and getting the reported pieces to qualified expenses and then being able to have the dollars that to use. But it was more of a reporting because it just goes on and on and on and everything else and that was the recommendation from that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and this, this was specifically around the lost revenue piece of that. I gave a staffing update. I have an individual leaving. Nellie will be leaving, so we don't know when, but I suspect by June. So I have another piece to that that I'll bring up at the end, so we did have a discussion about that at the Finance Committee meeting. I have some more pieces, but I'll just defer all those to there. We discussed general staffing needs at the Finance Committee meeting. There was some discussion, obviously, as I had brought up that we had a staff member leaving. There was some discussion of, you know, trying to recruit for these types of positions and going, you know, how are we trying to work through that? We had some discussion. There was some discussion around the use of Proffman. Proffman, there was some discussion around the internship program and also advertising. I know Brenda had talked quite a bit about advertising at different associations and different places she had been using. So we, we had some general discussion just around staffing because we're all kind of needing people, kind of need, I mean, Nellie's a similar person to the accounting position that Brenda will be keeping, so we're trying to kind of, how do we find two unicorns or three and so. So we had a discussion about that. We did talk about surplus property. We did finish our sale here a while back at the, on the offices and desks and things. We sold a hundred and twenty-two out of a hundred and seventy lots. Lots did have lots of things in them, as I said to the Finance Committee. And so we brought in about four point, forty-three hundred dollars in, in money. So it was, it moved good. We got rid of a lot of stuff. I think it was, it worked out well. And so we did our part. The building has actually been moved too, so you guys can see that. That was from the previous surplus sale, but it came on in, so.
I think somebody owes me a beer over that. Not you, somebody that's.
Was it a bet on whether?
It was never going to happen. Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, so, so anyway, we did well on that and we are going to work on having a more routine surplus sale for vehicles as we go through. But we, we are going to take a deep breath after the last two that we've just had and, and go from there. The next Finance Committee meeting will be May thirteenth at nine AM. That's all I have for the Finance Committee meeting unless Jake, do you have anything to add or does?
One thing I can add was on that discussion, we were talking about, you know, upgrading what we have for LinkedIn to a different account, rather than spending the money on Proffman, empowering our HR department to be able to go out and, you know, beat the bushes and really start tracking down how we're going to fill these hard, hard to fill roles. And what our, what our time, effort and money be better spent there and just wanted to get your guys' opinion on it. If that's something you may be interested in having our HR department bring forward is. It'll be a cost, but if it fills the roles, it'll be a good cost.
How much does that cost in compare? I mean, Proffman's not cheap. So some sense as far as. One-time cost with Proffman, so.
And this is just for what on LinkedIn?
So like how all the tech firms do it, I mean, everything is done through headhunting. And so this upgrades your membership so that you can go out there and start headhunting and finding and contacting the people that, that, you know, you want.
And just start cold calling people essentially to see if they want a job?
Pretty much. That's how about everybody wants for the hard to fill spots.
I was going to say, is that how everybody's doing it now?
People are headhunting.
You look really excited about that, by the way. Yeah, true. Sometimes somebody's got to ask.
Everybody will.
Okay. Well, I mean, obviously if Proffman ain't working, but it's money used elsewhere and if that's what everybody's doing, I'll take your word for it. Well, it's kind of our kicker there, so I wouldn't give up the Proffman idea if it's five grand. But at this point, we're looking for unicorns and I think we need to put as many eggs in as many different baskets as we can. Well, unless you're changing it as and actually boosting that pay level up and you might have a different story.
But again, we can do the same thing that Proffman can do for the most part.
Will explore.
The direction from the board to staff.
I will heed the advice of the Finance Committee.
Well, it wasn't, that specifically was talked about in the Finance Committee and we, we decided we, that was not any, that is a board decision, not a Finance Committee decision. We, we felt that, that we got, kind of got off a rabbit trail and both Brenda, well, I'm talking about the Proffman piece and so getting off into staffing, I guess, into the, how we do it and, and, you know, because we all, I mean, Brenda's got ideas of how she's out trying to find people. I'm trying to find people and we got down the path of Proffman. We decided that that was not a position the board or the Finance Committee should advise the board on, on staffing. That's really a board, a board position. It's, it's not the Finance Committees because Proffman crosses health, senior, you could do whatever. I mean, it just happened to be, we were talking about positions in the finance area.
It may not, but it was the right people and the right.
Yeah, it was a good discussion. It wasn't, but, but to say that it's a recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Recommendation of Jake is what you're saying.
Well, it, it was a conversation that we had.
I'll take all the licks today.
That's because we love you so much.
So I, I guess to go back to Finance Committee pieces and things that I did learn this morning when I talked to the Yakima County Treasurer is they're down four people in their department, which is almost five percent.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a fight.
It's, it's not like we're the only people that are out trying to find these people or, you know, get people to come to work or do whichever. I mean, there's, there's a lot of other places that are having challenges, so we're not alone in this, so.
And I don't want to, and I'll defer to the chair because this isn't really, this isn't a Finance Committee thing, but I'm, I'm kind of curious as we look at, you know, we're going to have to do something to market ourselves in a better way. We're going to have to do something different than everybody else because you said it is everywhere. It's, and it's across every industry. It's everything. There's just not enough workers for things. And I was kind of curious, it could potentially have a Finance Committee. When I was up last week at the hospital with the State Director, we were looking touring. I did not realize that the hospital here in Goldendale has acquired all these rental houses and that they, they say we give a, you know, a person a place to land where you don't. So when you hire somebody, it's not like they're giving you.
Giving you that up there.
You know, yeah, I know you have, but that's something that we're, you know, we've never really considered because that's something we may have to put some dollars into as far as an investment where it's not permanent, but it gives some, you know, they've got a place while they figure stuff out.
Trying to transition, yeah.
Why they try to transition.
I had heard the hospital does that, yeah.
So.
Not that they own the places, it's that they work.
Well, they're a public hospital, so that's what I didn't think we could either.
Landlords, you say, to make sure that they're first on the list when there's an opening. Couple new manufacturers back there behind the church. They got thrown in and they made sure they put their name on one or two of those.
So they're, they're not, they didn't buy. They're renting a place. The hospital's renting it and whether it's filled or not filled, it doesn't matter because when they hire someone, some, they'll find.
To some degree, the answer to that is yes.
That's the same thing in situ used to do all the time.
Yeah, I don't, I got the impression they, they own some places too. Because they said they don't really want to be a landlord that's not in there, but they felt like they had no, no, like they.
But I don't, we would have to defer to the hospital people, but I.
I'm kind of curious because I was always, I didn't think we could do that, but they're a public hospital.
I'm sure they're Airbnb-ing it on the side.
If they're, if they're doing it, why can't we?
But I.
Doesn't the treasurer want to invest in some housing?
No, the RCW does not allow for investment in housing. I can tell you that.
Probably need to have.
How do they do it?
We probably need to have some kind of round table on some of like that and then have all of the directors and electeds with their hard to find people in a room so we can strategize on how we're going to move forward finding their positions.
We did have a very robust, I think a very good conversation about just that, I mean, not just about that. I mean, and it took into all those. I mean, it went into internship programs and advertising and how to recruit across the county. There were, there were several things that we talked about as we're trying to do. Brenda's got her things that she's putting some advertisements out that she's had luck with before that are above and beyond other pieces. You know, word of mouth. I, I think we go back and, you know, I mean, one of the challenges is trying to find folks that want to live in a remote area. It, it has nothing to do with either, I mean, it's hard to find people that maybe want to live on what, you know, we, we have such a diverse part to our county. I mean, we, we, we just have to really be open-minded and see how we're going to get there because I think there are a lot of positions open at other places that they're trying to sift through and get the same people.
Right, but I also think there's policy discussions that need to happen here as far as is this board open to employment in the, in the twenty-first century of work from home? Twenty-second century, whatever it is now. Of work from home and, you know, telecommuting and whatnot that it wasn't necessarily.
Yeah, and I think we did just kind of go through some of that, but there are some challenges with that where, you know, in some of these positions, I know Brenda's got some DOL positions and I'm not going to speak for Brenda, but I know it, you know, you can't, that's not a work from home kind of position. You have to have the person in the office, so then you're trying to recruit this into a talent pool of person that would take a work from home position or a work in the office position, you know. I mean, there's, there's a lot of pieces to some of these parts and then there's also the thing, I think, in my treasurer's office. I mean, it's hard to have, maybe to try to have a different type of more flexible schedule, but that's really challenging when you're trying, I mean, taxpayers are coming to the office right now. I mean, that's one of the, running over here, we, we've been steadily busy and it's kind of nice, to be honest, to be back to kind of pre-COVID-like tax collection where people come into the office, they're paying their taxes. But, yeah, we have a lot of that, let me tell you. People are not happy with the assessments going up, but, but we, you know, I mean, it's, it's just going to be challenged to balance that because that might solve some, but then that, you know, where we might lose another person to a job. Oh, I want to work from home, you know, I, I think the, all those pieces, but I agree that we have to kind of figure it out. It's a whole new workplace post-COVID and I think that's part of the thing and I think COVID has advanced some of the challenges that we're facing that were kind of there before, but I think they're really more here after the COVID situation.
So, yeah, I wouldn't mind throwing that on a workshop day sometime to anybody and anybody interested. Elected director, whatever, bring your ideas and.
I think the good news is it's a small group we can fill in five percent. We've identified those and we've talked about those and we're working on the salaries up at all those officials and directors as we talked about last Tuesday, so we're talking about a very small group of employees that are hard to attract.
Field professional.
Are a hundred, something, almost two hundred and sixteen employees, a hundred and seventeen non-union positions. Are a hundred something, almost 260 employees, 117 non-union positions in the government. Most of them we fill, we fill successfully. HR doesn't do any of their recruiting. HR has not done any of the recruiting. That's not part of what they do. That's why the department individually identify and pay for them to go to an association. It's not traditionally.
And I think Rob, one of the things that was brought up at the finance committee meeting was just how this is, these are the hard positions to fill today. We could go five years from now and these are the easy ones to fill. And there's a different portion of.
This one will be hard to fill in five years.
But, but I guess, I mean, it could be finance today, it could be engineers tomorrow. I guess it, it's not always the same parts or pieces, you know, as we go through. I mean, as kids are choosing career fields, maybe they're deciding, hey, finance is a good place to be, but finance seems to be a struggle right now. Good conversation. It was good then. It still continues to be good. And I think we gotta keep noodling that over. Anything else?
Thought that was on my list.
Okay. Um, update on the treasurer's office, going back to the staffing. I have been working with Casey in the human resources office. And I would like to, we've kind of been, again, trying to think outside the box and trying to think through, okay, how are we gonna fulfill these positions? I would ask that there was a position that used to be in, it's not in the org chart on this sheet here at all. But we had, it was a, an accountant, which was a grade 39. And we were wondering, I'd like to make the senior account that box be a senior accountant, grade 70, or an accountant, grade 39. In trying to kind of, so just to try to attract, and I, I would, that's the box that Nellie is currently fulfilling. And I'd like to advertise for that or get a verbal. So I'd like a verbal to modify the org chart to add this accounting position back in. That's already in there, which is a grade 39. And I would like to put it into the senior accountant position and to put it into one of the accounting admin assistants. So there's some movement within there. And I would like to be able to advertise for Nellie's position. Now, get a verbal to do that. I may have two people in my office for a little bit of time, but.
That kind of confused me a bit there with your explanation. I guess I'd be a more of a, I'm more of a graph and crayon kind of guy.
Let me show you what I want to do.
I want to take the 39, this 39 account position and make this box here either a 70 or a 39.
An either or.
Either or.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not adding a box.
Okay.
Changing it so I can advertise for a 70 or a 39. And if there's maybe a 39. And then I'd like to change this one while I'm doing this to add this accounting position into this box. So that you can be an accounting admin assistant, one, two, three, or an accountant to that box.
So financial implications on that change.
Well, I'm, I don't.
Depends on who you hire.
I mean, it really depends on who I hire. I think really at this point in time. I don't know. I guess my, my thoughts are that I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm gonna find a senior accountant. And I can't go 18 months without, I, I mean, I'm gonna need to have a body in the position to be able, so I'm either. I mean, I guess the only other option would be to bring in even an accounting admin person. But I mean, we can't, we, there's the work that needs to be done. So I, I, I also remember possibly we'll have two ladies on maternity leave.
So theoretically, this, this could cost you a little more if you find the whole size accountant. It could cost you a little less.
Well, I only have so much budget in my budget, so I have to figure out how to work that out.
Right. That's what I said.
Just like it could cost you guys, it could cost you guys a little bit more while you're having your person who's leaving. And you have two people together at the same time that you guys have authorized.
Right. No, not, not disagreeing at all. Just trying to.
No, I, yeah, I'm with, I mean.
It gives you more avenue that if somebody applies, it may not necessarily be the unicorn, you could still make it work.
That's kind of what I'm hoping for. And it also maybe gives that position some room to move. And it gives one of the other positions a little bit of room to move too, so that I have. Because at one point in time, I, and I, I have gone away from the chief deputy, so I do not have a chief deputy. I just have five boxes that report directly to the treasurer. And so we had, went with the accountant. And looking back on it now, I probably should have left the, or the senior accountant is what we have. I probably should have put another job description in the box. So there was, I mean, this just has one job description in there. And in today's day and age, I think if I can say, okay, we have an accountant or a senior accountant position that's available that we're gonna advertise. Then I can try to, you know, if, if, depending on qualifications.
Broader net is good.
Yeah, a broader net. That's exactly it. And see what's out there. Um, and then my only thought was, is while I was doing that, to add that back into one of the other positions, not saying that it would ever, because I guess just trying to provide more flexibility in my org chart to try to do what I can. I, I honestly, I was probably only a couple of months ago saying, God, I got a great team. This is all great, you know? And then somebody leaves and then you're trying to figure out where you need a new body. And, and I mean, in some fairness, if one of the people moves around, I'm still trying to search for the lower level. So then I got people that are moving up through there. And then I gotta go back. So I, I guess trying to stay. At this point in time, I'm not asking per se for any more dollars. I am going to need to come for salary dollars. I don't, I am gonna be honest, my budget is gonna be tight because of the banking fees. So that's a whole nother piece. So more than likely, I'm gonna be here talking about a supplemental budget at some point in time. I hope this amount for salaries is very, very small and I'm working to try to do that. But I think at some point I gotta figure out how to get a net out there to try to get bodies because, or, or something. And this was a way we were gonna try to do it. So the goal would be to advertise for Nellie's position and advertise it as a senior accountant or a, or an accountant, one of the grade 70, one of the grade 39. And that way there, if we, we'll see what we get.
Any.
Difference is, but Nellie's been at a 39.
Then Nellie's been at a 70.
Nellie's been at a.
But she's been in my office since I became treasurer. And, and I mean, she's been there, she was the first, first person I brought on. Brenda has a little more years of service, but Nellie has been in the office almost eight years.
So that changes what I was about to say. Thank you very much. I was gonna say, there's a $25,000 difference between a 39 and a 70. And if you're shooting for a 70, but you're gonna get a 39 because there's no 70s out there.
Well, I'd, but I'd also rather have the ability to, if I have to bring somebody on, this is the one thing that I think where we kind of become challenged and where we get pinched. Is if we're gonna, if we don't get who we think meets that criteria, but we bring them in at a 70, then I'm really in a pickle too. So I would much rather have the ability to bring somebody in at a 39 and have them work into a 70. And that has worked well for me in my office. And again, that's been my thing. So my thoughts are a hundred percent. This would depend on qualifications. I mean, if somebody came in and said, you know, I'm right out of college and I think I'm a 70. And I'd say, well, I, I don't, maybe we don't have the right fit. But if, if we can find somebody who maybe doesn't have all the right pieces, comes in and in a year, then there is some upward mobility. Or the other concern that I have is, is that I may have somebody that's already fulfilling one of these other boxes that applies for that job and does have the background and the criteria to kind of do all that. So I guess it gets me the ability to look outside of the county to compare, to make sure that if I do move somebody inside, that we're making sure that it's the right thing for the department. And it gives me some flexibility to try to make sure folks have something that makes their position challenging and interesting.
Casey, do we do this very often where you do, you're pretty much two different jobs that you're kind of advertising for at the same time for the same box? That we've done this? Okay.
So why exactly are you sitting behind Greg going like this?
Really? I just saw the.
One more step down the plank. That's okay.
Just trying to make her laugh.
Now, back to the drawing board. No, no, no. And I, I think that's my goal with that in my chart is to try to, because I do think that's one of the challenges that we are faced with. Is giving people, getting them in, keeping them, you know, and, and everybody, oh, I, I'm one, I mean, yes, we have a 10 step program. But I mean, in fairness, I mean, does it really take 10 years to get through the 10 step program? Probably not. So then when you're balancing everything in there, and, and when you get good people, they're really worth their weight in gold. Because trying to, because trying to retrain somebody and bring somebody back in for that is, is a real difficult. I mean, Nellie will be a significant loss. She's, she has a lot of information that she has, you know, with this financial systems and how everything's tied together. And, and it'll be tough to replace. But I think we, we have good people in the office that are doing other positions. And I think we'll be able to kind of keep working through. You know, I am a little nervous because, you know, here we are going through, I mean, as a finance office. We're getting ready to really starting to dive into having some discussions about systems and processes and, you know, I'm big on processes. And here, when one of your main people is not there, I, I have a good idea of the processes, but then there's still other work that needs to be done where she was doing that. So that's my concern with that is making sure. And I really think in an accountant piece, there is a possibility where you get somebody who has some accounting. But they just aren't maybe there. They could still do the job that's needed to be done or could be trained.
Most of it.
But I just don't want to then just say, well, you're a 70. And then what, then what do I do? And in two years, what's my position? I'd rather say, hey, I think that this is a good fit. And if it is a good fit for everybody, it's gonna work. If not, then maybe not. And, and who knows? I mean, some stuff works, some stuff doesn't, but I, I think it's worth a try.
You had me at hello, sir.
Well, thank you.
You had me, then you lost.
Yeah, well, that's usually how I do it, Dave. You know that. I've been here many a times. I can talk my way out of yes, that's for sure.
And I was just waiting for Casey to nod her head.
Yeah. I only said I was talking to her. I wasn't really, no, that's just, that's no, she's been very helpful. That was the first place I went to when I heard that news. So, um, yeah, so we, and, and we don't know exactly, like you guys don't exactly when this is all gonna transition. But we, we do believe it to be fairly soon, um, as things are moving pretty quickly. So thank you very much for your help on that. Um, let's see. Um, we are in tax collection. Um, so we're into the last, uh, the taxes are due on May 2nd. Just for a reminder for everybody, because Friday is only the 29th. So, um, the, the public does have until Monday to pay their taxes. So, um, it's been a pretty steady race. We're, I, I will say we have gotten a lot more Dropbox payments and, and we're kind of, you know, it's kind of a, a different mix. We have people still coming in, but we still have people using some of the new, the drop boxes and some of the things that we've gotten put in, which are nice because then we can process everything through the, um, through the machine. So that does help. The white salmon parcel, I don't remember if I put this on here before or not, but that did get closed and transferred to the white salmon, the city of white salmon. So I wanted to put a checkbox by that. And then the last piece that I have is timber tab. There was a discussion amongst the treasures at our last meeting, I think a couple of weeks ago. That there is some discussion amongst the commissioners about tab parcel, some of the parcels that were out there that are part of the, the parcels that were, went like in 1930s or whatever, that they went, the state, state, yes, state, yes.
What is tab?
Tab is timber assessed value tax or something like that. I don't know. But anyway, around that, that there are trying to move some parcels or exchange some of those parcels. I believe this is in Lewis County. And they're wanting to maybe move a parcel that is here in exchange for a parcel over here that does then move from one TCA to the other TCA.
The transfer program.
Okay.
It is horrible for the counties.
It is horrible. And so I just want to make sure, I don't know who's tracking that. They said this started with the commissioners. And so we were kind of late, uh, the Mason County Treasurer, and I believe the Lewis County Treasurer and somebody else went to a meeting with some of the, I don't know who all was there, but it just came back that they're trying to do some transfers. And that I just want to make sure that we recognize when monies like that come in from different parcels of where they're located at, those go to the districts that are in that parcel. So if you all of a sudden want to take a parcel that's in, I'm gonna use Glenwood or whatever, and move it to Bickleton. Those monies are gonna really move from one to the other. And so it's not just as simple as saying, oh, well, yes, the county one, your county levy would be the same. But your hospital levy would be, probably be different. Your school district levy would be different and so on and so forth. So.
Why are they moving these unless like they can't log them where they're at? So they're trying to switch to a different.
For example, what happened for us, because we have, we have a transfer parcel. And that was, it was in the gorge national scenic area. It was up, um, kind of by major creek. And we were never gonna be able to log it. And so what we did is, is we switched that out for one, so that we could get a parcel somewhere else that we could log in the future. The problem was, is it went from the 75% that we used to get to like you get 50/50 or something like that. And it's like, well, wait, wait, this doesn't, this isn't fair. I mean, granted, 50% of something is better than zero of nothing.
Zero of nothing.
But you're also moving the revenues that are coming in from that. And that's the picker, that's the piece that we were just, so if there are some of those pieces, I don't remember when that happened. So maybe that was.
That was in, no, it was after, it was 2009. Cause I, cause they were gonna do it first. We actually protested first the transfer. Because, I mean, we got, we, we.
No, it's just.
I mean, the whole thing, we got not a good deal. I mean, but we ended up with, it was something versus nothing. Because the, the thing that we got, we felt, and I went and actually talked to the, the, um, Public Lands, uh, was, no, the, the director, the, the, whoever, commissioner of, commissioner of public lands at the time, Mr. McClure and I went and had a meeting because it was the, the policy, the first policy was in that case, which it is, it's kind of unique in the scenic area. Is that those parcels that forest board trust land, our county trust land predated the scenic act. The scenic act came and because of the scenic act rules, it was unharvestable. And so all of the, so they took all of the value of the trees. We couldn't harvest it. And so DNR said, we, we got a smoking deal for you. We'll, we'll trade out of that. The thing that is really made me mad was they did a land transfer. If it was in private ownership, they could acquire it and pay and for the timber. So they did a transfer. The only thing, so we got switched out land that we could harvest, but we only got the value of the dirt. No value for the trees. And there was, you know, millions of board feet of timber on it. On that property. We lost. And then they did a transfer. It went to Plum Creek, who then sold it to the Forest Service to put it in, cause it's in the scenic area. Cause they wanted it and they got paid.
They got paid for the timber when that was.
Yes.
So all I wanted to just bring.
Anyway, but we did move it from, it would have been in the probably Lyle School District, TCA into, it's up Buck Creek.
Okay. So if there's any of that going, just we can maybe kind of communicate. It didn't sound like any of these were in Clickitat County that anything was happening on. But these were in Lewis County, I want to say they had, and they have a lot of that kind of stuff over there. So. Anyway, I just was, if, if you're hearing of that, I hadn't really heard of much of it. But again, it wasn't really impacting our county. But there was some concerns about how the dollars would be allocated.
So can we talk a little bit about when, when they harvest county trust land? DNR takes 25% off the top. That's their management fee or whatever. But then we still have to pay the timber excise tax dollars, right?
I would, I would assume.
And those dollars get sent to all the junior taxing districts, correct? Now, the rest of that money, which like if it was in a, if it was a private ownership, I would have to pay the timber excise tax. I would have to pay my, um, timber management company, which is DNR. And then after that, I would retain personally all of that money, what's left. The, the juniors get the timber excise tax money. That's pretty much their pilt for the taxes that they weren't paying that whole time. When you get the monies that come in, the timber excise tax should already be pulled off and that's gonna get sent to all the juniors. When that money comes in, that's county trust land, are you then taking that and sending it out to the juniors?
That's the way, yep. And that's the way other county treasurers are doing it as well. Specifically Lewis County, who has the most, has a significant amount of that.
But specific, I'm.
And you're getting, and then the general fund, the road fund, everybody's getting their portion of it.
But I'm trying to understand why, because in essence, we are the land owner of that. You would think that, yes, the, the general fund and the road fund and all that stuff, that would all come out of that timber excise tax. They would get their portions out of that. The rest of it would be in essence, we own that ground. We would be keeping that in our general fund.
Yeah, that's not how other counties, I don't even believe that's how Skamania County does it either, but I would have to call them and ask.
I, let's talk to Skamania County, because I've talked to their commissioners and.
I've talked to their treasurer. So yeah, and I'm pretty sure that they allocate it just like we do. Cause we haven't ever had one until just recently. And that's how we did the timber sale that was on the, on the west end.
We need, just, let's, let's triple check that one over and over.
We, we did it the last time when you brought it up, the last time.
I mean, can we look as far as, cause somewhere there has to be an RCW that.
Yep.
I mean, can we look as far as, because somewhere there has to be an RCW that, that directs that.
And I'll go back and.
If it doesn't, then yeah.
Somebody's word that it's been this long for twenty years.
I'm pretty sure it's, I'm pretty sure that when this came up the last time, I put the RCW in my little.
I thought you did too, but.
I'll go pull it up and look at it one more time.
Having a conversation with one of the commissioners somewhere and it's like, oh no, we get all that money, well.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think so, he does get a good portion of it though, because I'm sure that their. General fund is a large part, portion of that, so goes on levy.
Thirty percent maybe.
Hmm, I bet you more than that, if that and the road fund.
Road in general, about thirty percent.
Oh, I would bet more than that. I'll be honest with you, the one that gets, the one that should get you is the school, there's the one that probably should sting.
I know, the schools are winning every time with this new wave.
Cause they, there's a large, because by the time you get the state school two, one, state school two and the.
And then when it, when you get reassessed or reappraised every year.
Yeah, the challenges though.
Get more, way more money and we don't.
In our community probably get more money from the allocation process of the school dollars in the very end. Than we pay, but it still is, because you know, that money goes to the state for state school one and two, but we do get it back in apportionment, I say.
Right, but then every timber sale that we do, the school, state, the schools are getting about half of it, the state schools.
Oh, yeah, but I'd probably say about the same amount as the road fund and the general fund, I mean, then there's the little piece that goes out to the pieces. But we can go look at it, but we, we had this conversation when we did it the last time, I, I know there's an RCW about it, I do not know what it is off of my head, but. I'm pretty sure it was in my report when I did it, because I remember toiling over how I was going to figure all that out.
Got it, well, it's, it's been quite a long day, so I've probably forgotten all of our previous conversations.
I have nothing, the good news is I have nothing else, that was all, and I, my only concern was with the swap, if that ever does happen or whatever. If somebody could just let me, or if, you know, at a commissioner meeting or there's a discussion about moving property on things like that. I'd just be curious to know kind of what that impact would be, because in, in Lewis County, it was sounding like it was kind of a significant one, moving it from one place to another. And they were having a discussion and I think the state was thinking, oh, this is a great deal and the county was saying, okay, it is for the state. And, and not that it wasn't necessarily for the county, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but it was just, it did have impacts into that of how they were doing different things. And how things were being allocated.
Yeah, I would imagine that if we were having those discussions, there would be a couple of electeds brought into it that have the little.
Well, and I think this thing was, it was a commission, it was through the WASAC or WASAC or whatever your guys' commissioner association is. Um, they were having the discussion somehow or another and that's how it got through, but, so we're good.
One thing I'm curious about, because that, again, that was back like in two thousand and nine. I think the, the, uh, forest board has to consult, but they don't, like, I didn't. They can do whatever they want, so they asked us, are we okay with the transfer? We said, no, they pulled it, they didn't do it. And then like a year later it came up again and at that point we were neutral because we had. As far as on this one, we were like, well, we're, we're, we're getting.
I mean, we would have been better off to just sell it to the Forest Service.
They can't, that was the whole, that was, I'm like, fine, then if it's, ultimately it's supposed to go to the Forest Service. The Forest Service was prohibited from buying it from another government entity, including DNR on our, you know, us through the DNR. But, so that was the, the little deal.
The whole reason trust for public lands exists.
Exactly, so, and they, yeah, Plum Creek had it for as long as it took to file the papers and then the transfer, and oh, here's your check. Thank you.
Probably made a pretty penny.
Well, we, we lost millions out of that deal, so.
Okay, uh, I know the prosecutor is, um, away at a conference, so we won't be expecting anything from him. Thank you very much, Treasurer Gallagher, thank you to the rest of the finance committee, um, for being here and being a part of the discussion. Is there anything anybody else remembers that we forgot? Because I forget everything. I was looking at it, like, it just popped up, I'm like, how is she doing minutes while she's sitting back there, but my computer was a little slow. Yeah. All right, if nothing else, I would entertain a motion, um.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, we have no workshop scheduled.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, despicable me is signing off for the day.
Right.